The body of councillors. Clock's striking. We had a relatively full day today. So we will reconvene the meeting, I'll move that we reconvene. councillor Wilson seconds, all in favour? Gary. Our first submitter this morning is Suzanne Menzies-Cullum.
Just, Mr Chairman, just a process issue, could I ask a question before we start please? In terms of the process, I'm assuming that we're running with the the normal situation where at the end, we flag things as we go along, ask for that there's going to be a need for staff feedback if it's not already on the comments. And that gets considered at such time as we do the deliberations rather than as part of this process.
I'm happy at the end of the hearing to just give councillors a chance to raise the issues they feel they want further work on before the deliberations.
Thank you.
So welcome and the floor is yours.
Aukurra. Kiu raka tokatua. My, main part of my submission is dealing with waste management and so I'll address that first. I'm at a loss as to why our waste management system is so broken and illogical. I've just been down to Countdown and asked it to to buy a bag, a set of bags, six bags for rubbish, the black bags. Now, that's $18.50 for six. Now for you and I, it might not be a big deal, but if you're a family and you have a limited income, spending $18.50 for a set of six rubbish bags is just outrageous. I also think it's really outdated when you think that other metropolitan areas larger than Dunedin actually have a bin collection for their rubbish. They also have a bin collection for organic waste which we don't have. So I'm just wondering when the city is going to actually change from the black bags, which people have been complaining about for a very long time, into something that's paid for by the rates rather than taxing the poor by expecting them to pay $18.50 every time they have to go and buy six black bags. I'm also concerned because I've learnt of a number of cases where people are storing the rubbish on their properties, in their cellars, and I think that it won't be very long if this continues before we have a situation where we have plagues of vermin and rats and we're going to need a pied piper, I'm not sure which one of you around the table here would volunteer for the job. But it is a real issue in terms of our public health. It seems to me that the black bag situation which is based on a user pays philosophy or theology if you like, is actually a tax on the poor and I think it's really time for the city council to rethink. The other thing that concerns me is that there's a private contract, I think it's Waste Management, who leases out bins to households, a number of people access those. The problem I have with that is that the rubbish that goes in there is everything. There's no sorting out and recycling and that's going to landfill which I assume is on land that's leased from the city council. So it seems to me that the whole philosophy of reducing rubbish to landfill and to try and protect the rest of us and our waterways from leachates and things like that is being undermined by this process where we actually lease land out to private business so that everything can go into it. The second thing I wanted to raise is about local procurement so that we actually start to foster more employment in the city. I'm not exactly sure of all the details the council has, but I think it's a matter of urgency given today's climate that we actually stop looking at just the bottom line and start looking at the wellbeing of our people. Looking at how supporting our people and making sure that they understand that they're important will actually help us protect the environment and also will satisfy the the need for profit on the bottom line. It may, it may come as a surprise, but I think, and a number of other people think too, that the disinterest that people have in our local body elections and democracy in general is because they don't believe that they count. They don't believe that the elected officials are there to serve them and to look after their needs and their wellbeing and I think that city council needs to start reframing how they make these decisions so that people understand that they are the centre of the decision-making, not that profit or business is at the centre. And the third thing is about the perennial problem of the buses. I know that the regional council is in charge of those, I also know that given the conversations in the community, it's always the Dunedin city councillors who get the blame. And I'm not sure of the mechanisms that's needed, but I know that in the past a number of local authorities and local people around the country have been able to get an MP to sponsor private bills to make changes to legislation and I'm just wondering whether it's possible for the city council to actually look at a Dunedin specific bill in terms of how we run our buses that, because it's going to be too hard to try and change the Local Government Act. So that's my, that's my submission.
Happy to take questions.
Yes, we're happy to take questions.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Kiu raka Suzanne.
Kiu raka.
Woodwind instruments aren't my specialty sadly. On the public transport issue, aside from the legislative process which could take however long to wind its way through, we are, there's a specific question that we've asked as part of this process as to whether people are comfortable in the meantime with using revenue generated through parking or other means to subsidise the current system more and you're supportive of that. And secondly, just to save you waiting around, with regard to your questions around the curbside collection process, the options for future services will come to council in June with a public process asking for feedback on that in August and September of this year. Which is the first time we've done that since about 2006 I think, so points well made, but that conversation is something we'll get to have later this year, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, and taking that point which is the big picture stuff. There seems to me inherent in a lot of the debate is how do you actually just reduce waste? Because that actually is where we need to be going rather than the periphery stuff. And I'm just wondering, you know, we've got a waste minimisation levy that we're meant to be putting into. Would, are there particular communities that you think may benefit from some targeted education in how to reduce waste? And to deal with it in a more circular society, you know, we're looking at a circular economy. There are other ways, now Wekouiti wanting to go that way, that puts missions in on that?
I think, I don't think that education is necessarily the hub of the matter. You know, like because we can't burn our garden rubbish for example, we have to compost it, there's, there are lots of people who don't have the ability. They may have the knowledge, but they don't have the space to do that kind of stuff. And education would help when it comes to learning how to compost, but then if you've got lots of kids and you're fraught and you're working two jobs and all those sort of things, the time that you have to do those kind of things is limited. So I think that there needs to be more support put in so that people can get their organic waste off their properties. It can make money for the DCC if it's composted wherever, at the landfill or the tip, which is where I think things used to happen. So that's what one big thing is actually not putting, you know, garden rubbish in the landfill. I think people do understand about recycling, one of the things I saw in Christchurch is that they only have a rubbish collection every second week. They have compost recycling one week, so that's one yellow bin or whatever, and then the next week the rubbish goes out, so people aren't able to actually keep putting rubbish and rubbish and rubbish, so they're encouraged to recycle because of the the framing of the recycling and rubbish collection. So also in central Otago where I have an interest, rubbish isn't collected every week either, so they have different collections that sort of stagger the rubbish. I don't think, I don't think people so much need education as they need support to actually, in the processes to do that.
Okay, so can I, can I understand which waste stream is the most, one that you're most concerned about, is it organics?
It's organic, yes, and it's food waste and it's all that sort of stuff that people just, you know, put in their black bags. And so the fact that you've got to pay $18.50 for a bag, you know, a set of bags, which in my household it might take a month to fill a black bag, but in fact if I had, you know, teenagers in a family of, you know, six or seven including parents, it might take two black bags a week. So it just depends, there's a lot of stuff that we try and reuse and recycle, but it's not always possible.
Thank you.
Councillor Vandewess.
Thank you for coming this morning. We had what I thought was a very interesting submission yesterday or the day before from someone who's been a professional in the recycling of waste for a long time. And he pointed out that it costs, for instance in the case of glass recycling, it costs us half a million dollars every year simply to separate it and, and to collect it. And then of course it has to be sent to Auckland actually to get recycled. And he suggested that actually we should be looking at producer responsibility and get the producers to actually deal with this issue rather than settle the rate payers with it. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I think it would, long past the time when we should have had container deposit schemes so that people can actually return their containers, glass, plastic containers. I mean, the Glass Bottle Forum, which is sort of, well, captured by I think people like Coca-Cola, they've been fighting this container deposit scheme for a very long time and it's about time that was stopped. Because we're putting perfectly good things into recycling which there is no market for. And I'm old enough to remember the days when you could actually collect your soft drink bottles and your beer bottles and get money to buy your Christmas presents or whatever you wanted to buy. So I think it wouldn't hurt for the city council to be putting a lot of pressure on manufacturers and others. In Germany, they have like return vending machines where you actually push, it's like going to buy your soft drink, but the opposite. You put your containers into a vending machine and you get a credit which you can then spend at the supermarket. My husband was involved in a business called Smart Bottles and he talked to a number of supermarkets around the town as to whether they would be prepared to set up facilities for the return of glass bottles. And they refused because all they want is, all the space they have is there for them to make money out of. They weren't interested in providing any service. So I think that, you know, there's vested interests that are pushing for rate payers to deal with recycling when it should be at the beginning of the process rather than at the end.
Great. Do you agree then that the container deposit and general issue of producer responsibility has to be done at national level, you just can't pick one manufacturer off in a particular city at a time?
I think that local bodies have a role. If they start to put pressure on central government, something might start to happen. But if you just leave it to individuals to try and pressurise the government, it'll take a very long time.
Okay. Regarding the composting issue, do you recognise that it only really takes one square metre to put in a quite effective compost unit and that it swallows up most of your green waste and fruit waste?
I'm aware of that, yes, I'm aware of that, but I'm saying that my particular situation, our family situation is not, not necessarily that of most people. And they will, and for example, we've got an issue at our place at the moment because we've dug out a lot of old flax and we've got lots of cabbage trees. So they're the things that really stump people when it comes to composting. So yes, so we're planning something, my husband's planning something with those. But the reality is, you know, a lot of people don't have the time or the skill or the passion. And so you can't actually force them to do that and so having a green waste system is something that you can, the city can sell the compost, it's been done all around the country. If Christchurch can have a green waste system, collection system, why can't Dunedin?
I've been told that one of the issues with selling compost is that there's no way of telling whether or not there's been significant amounts of glyphosate or other herbicides used in the material that you make your compost from. And that there may even be some liability down the track if it's found that significant levels are actually causing harm somehow. Have you heard of that issue?
I know it could, it could be an issue, but I think that, you know, city council has to find a way around that. Have to deal with it.
The other thing the experienced submitter had to say about waste collection was that most of the plastics that we collect, there is no longer any market for. Do you have any suggestion about what we should do there other than what we've already suggested which is producer responsibility?
No, I think we should be, we should be discouraging manufacturers from the use of plastic containers, that's really the bottom line. It's cheaper, but, but the cost always falls on somebody else rather than the manufacturer.
And all central government needs to do is make sure that the cost falls on the manufacturer or the producer and that would go a long way to sort the problem?
Well, maybe there has to be incentives for people to use, use containers that are recyclable and, or reusable. You know, you can use a carrot or a stick.
Okay, and you think the container deposit idea is probably the best thing to go in that regard?
Well, it might actually encourage a bit more responsible stewardship on the part of the people who manufacture these things out of fossil fuels, let me add, to actually provide something that, that can be reused for a long time and actually do us all a favour.
The container munchers that you mentioned in Germany, I've used them myself, they certainly are very popular. They're everywhere where there's a major sort of outlet of some kind. Do you recognise that for them to be successful they have to be nationwide and the government has to mandate their use?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. No one's going to do it willingly.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, thank you for your wide-ranging submission. I just wanted to ask a question about the buses and thank you for your focus on that. If we did have control of the buses, what would be the key things you would want changed?
I think making the bus routes more, more logical and, and easy to access. Maybe having feeder, feeder bus, smaller buses in the city. I just think it's really bizarre at the moment that we have these ginormous buses that can hardly get around the corners of some of our streets. They're usually empty or with one or two people. It doesn't seem to make any sense to me, I understand that what, what goes behind the engine doesn't matter how long it is, you know, the cost's already upfront. But the reality is, you know, we've had to have people changing their shop fronts and changing their verandas to allow these buses to go through. And it's letting out contracts to various contractors. It's just, it seems to me that if the city council who is really concerned about the wellbeing of the Dunedin people actually had control of that resource, it would fit in with the needs of the Dunedin people. At the moment we've got a target regional council which is probably predominantly farmers who don't live in the Dunedin ward and they're making decisions for a service they never use. And so it doesn't seem to me that they've got a lot of real interest in making sure that we are served properly and that people are encouraged to go on the buses. And I think also if Dunedin City did actually start to run the buses, they would find ways that would make them more affordable as well. Because we want to try and get cars off the road, you know, it's at the moment, sometimes even in the middle of the day, this congestion on the one-way street system. It's for a whole number of reasons, but it also is because of, the city's growing, more people are coming, the infrastructure isn't here to, to deal with it. And so I just think that Dunedin people would be at the heart of decisions made when it comes to letting out contracts or whatever else for the bus service. At the moment it's not working.
Thank you. So my follow-up question would be around a proposal on the annual plan for a bus loop in the central city, what were your thoughts on that?
Well, I haven't, I haven't put a lot of thought into, into that. But I think that it is really important that we actually have something that is logical and accessible and does actually enable people to get around the city easily. So I don't think the regional council can really deal with that.
Councillor O'Malley.
Hi Suzanne, how are you? I'm going to touch on both your main points. On the waste and environmental solutions, council, this flight correctors, stuff coming to council now and it's pretty much going to address almost exactly everything you said in your presentation, right down to will this be a user pays or will it be in the rates? As one of the questions on how you're going to pay for it and acknowledging pretty much your point about people with low socioeconomic capacity are most hard hit by direct fees and therefore it becomes an unfair burden. So that will be addressed coming up in the future. Question I really have about that is we are effectively rebuilding the system from scratch because we have really done not much about it for probably the last 25 to 30 years and with the closing of the Green Island landfill, we're really approaching everything. Do you, what's your idea about consultation around how high a quality service we offer, not just on the pickup, the curbside collection, but also construction demolition waste which is actually our biggest volume consumer? And the concept of embracing the circular economy? Because this is not going to be in that paper, that's going to come a little bit later and I'd like to sort of get your feedback as we move into that second phase which will probably be coming next year. Do you want us to pretty much go for the best we can?
Absolutely. I think we really should, we should be planning for the next seven generations. And if we don't actually do that, then we're sort of condemning our children and grandchildren to be living in a rubbish tip. So, you know, we have to actually do the best we can now.
Because the message I'm asking you if you want to give it or not is sometimes when people are planning, they make an assessment that the council's only going to be willing to pay so much, so then they put the plan inside the perceived upper spending window. Versus say designing something and then saying this option would cost this much, this would cost this much and this much. I would like to see us go to the latter approach to this, what do you think about that idea?
Well, see, it depends on what you talk about when you're talking about costing. Because if you're talking about the, the cost of setting up the system in the first place, that's one cost. If you're talking about the loss of opportunity cost over a number of years, that's a different cost. And if you're talking about the cost of not doing it properly over a couple of generations, that's a different cost again. And I think if you're going to be asking people about costs, you need to actually be really clear as to what you're talking about because you can do something really cheaply now and everyone will say, yeah, let's go for it. But in the, in the long term it's going to cost us a hell of a lot more. And given that councils, local bodies are there to deal with such basic things as roads and rubbish and stuff like this, we should expect that that's one of the, the calls that, that is made on our rate payers' money. Because when I look at the budget, there's a very small percentage that's actually going on this kind of stuff at the moment. When you talk about, I think it's less than five percent is going on dealing with this sort of stuff.
Environmental solutions. And also we have, we've got some other targets we have to meet around carbon neutrality and, and obviously just bearing protrusable waste causes methane production.
Yeah.
Just one comment you made, I just want to clarify, are you aware that the National Ross landfill is not on council land? That's a private landfill.
Which, which?
Well, the other major landfill in the city.
Oh, that one beside the motorway?
Yeah, that's not on.
No, I didn't know that, I just assumed that they must have leased it off the council.
And that's because the Otago Regional Council effectively determines the the rules around landfills. So are you aware the fact that we're operating under a system where we don't completely operate all of the, we don't have all of the controls?
I mean, yeah, yeah, that's, I think the Otago Regional Council's, you know, passage is by date myself.
Great. And now on to transport. Many of the things that you've discussed again, you correctly identified that in fact are not directly in our control at the moment. But there are mechanisms by which we could have more control or we could in fact get them completely in our control. Are you aware then that, that MPs have in fact been approached, certainly I personally approached them about that very thing, about will you actually put in a private members' bill to start changing and there is reluctance to go there?
I didn't know that, no.
So there's not much point in the council asking because it's more interesting.
I just, it was a solution I came up with last night because I couldn't think of how to short circuit the process of trying to change the local building.
Would you like that to be raised again though? I mean, would you?
Yeah, somehow, I think we have to keep pushing and pushing.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Elder.
Thank you, Chairman, and I was just, just a question about creating jobs in the local economy and the local procurement policy. And I was just wondering whether in fact I could ask Sue or Simon if there's anything on that?
Yeah, there is, we, in our procurement policy for most, for many contracts procurement, if we're using a waste attributes where we, where we look at the various things other than just the bottom line, we do have the potential to have consideration for by local and by sustainable and to give points weightings for both of those two attributes or for either one of them as part of the procurement process, we brought that in about two years ago. For some kinds of contracting, for example with New Zealand Transport Agency, they have a very tight set of methodology and for some kinds of contracting purchasing, we don't have the option. We have, as long as they fulfil basic requirements, it's a bottom line requirement, you know, cost, but where we're able to, we, we like we, we insert the by local and by sustainable weighting clauses in our procurement already.
Thanks, Sue.
Thanks Suzanne. Our next submitter is Andy McLean. Councillors, just a few words of caution. We do have a very full agenda of hearings and for those that are waiting to be heard, it's upon us to try and keep our questions succinct. Don't ask the same question to get the same answer. And please, please try not to have too much of a statement before asking a question. Otherwise we're going to run out of time and the spare time that I will have to use is your morning tea break, your lunchtime and your afternoon tea break. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and update you guys this morning. I'm Andy McLean from Otago Hockey and this is David Booth from King's High School. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today and provide an update on our exciting artificial turf project at King's High School in South Dunedin. The purpose of our submission today is to request that the DCC, as the best equipped entity, takes responsibility of the procurement facility build and ultimately ownership of the proposed new facility in South Dunedin. From an Otago hockey perspective, the reason behind this request is to allow us to concentrate as much resource as possible on our core role of delivering hockey and expanding on the product and opportunities we are able to offer participants. Hockey has bucked trends and enjoyed a prolonged period of growth in numbers nationally. Winter playing numbers have grown every year for the last 10 years. Here in Dunedin we reflect that with the growth from 1700 10 years ago to 2700 today. One of the key drivers for this success is hockey's genuine claim to be a gender equal sport with our participation numbers being close to 50-50 male female split. Hockey enjoys a huge range, huge age range as referenced by growth in our junior numbers and the continued involvement of a large and engaged masters community. This growth has put huge pressure on our current facility in Harbour Terrace where we operate until 10pm five nights a week. Play on Saturday runs from 8.30 in the morning through until 8 at night and we have games and trainings that take up pretty much all of Sunday. The fact we've been able to sustain growth with these less than ideal conditions, with the likes of secondary school games finishing at 10pm gives us reason to believe much more is possible. Our research suggests that improvement in the hours in which we can offer participation opportunities which a third turf will provide and an increase in accessibility that a facility in South Dunedin will provide will add more to the growth in physical activity and community involvement that our sport promotes. Owning our facility at Harbour Terrace provides a continual balancing act and allocation of resource in terms of facility versus investment in the development of our sport and associated programmes. It is our view that the ownership of a third turf will tip this balance too far in terms of our role as facility managers and owners. We believe that our utilisation outland above is extremely efficient in terms of the facilities that we occupy and that we've not put undue pressure on the city in regard to facilities. In lieu of additional artificial services, we are approaching a point where a significant number of suitable grass fields will be required. A recent report had optimal numbers of participants per turf at 600 to 800. At 2700 members and just turf, just two turfs, we far exceed that. Recent funding success has taken the level of secured funding that we've managed to obtain for this project to 1.4 million. After discussions with the Otago Community Trust, we're in the process of submitting an increased application to them. Importantly, we were successful in working through the requirements of a lottery's application and have an application in front of them in their current round for 870,000. To be accepted by lottery, significant work was required around consent and approval from the Ministry of Education around land use etcetera. We've not been through a formal RFP, but costing indications required for lottery's application have us woven towards a conservative worst case total figure of 2.5 million. While the focus of this submission is community and participation, we do have a need to point out the potential economic benefits of being a three-turf city and qualifying for national and international events. The National Masters Tournament recently attracted 81 teams to Hamilton and this has historically been said to generate over 2 million in economic impact to its host cities. This submission also comes at a time when Hockey New Zealand has Dunedin earmarked as host to one of just six hockey high performance centres throughout New Zealand. The Hockey Pro League is in its first season and the exposure that that is generating can only lead to further growth in our sport. Hockey is on a high and we need to capitalise. I'm going to introduce you to David Booth from King's High School.
Thanks, Andy. We see our role as Kings High School as being a key part of the South Dunedin community, providing excellent education for all those who wish to attend across Dunedin. We see the addition of a hockey turf on Kings High School as a key part of the South Dunedin sporting hub. We have a proven track record in offering access to our campus, it is open campus after school hours and on the weekends to those who wish to use it. Fee to schools already participates in the use of our covered cricket nets, where a purpose-built covered facility, complete with bowling machines, which are enhancing the level of cricket in the Dunedin area. We see our part and this also is a financial contributor to the capital cost of the project, which is a part of the original arrangements that are in place. We also see that foregoing our playing fields to have this turf is a thing we're prepared to forego for the benefit of all users of our sporting facilities. But also the turf is not solely for hockey, but in the summer months clearly is open to all community users to use as a sporting surface to be used. And that we, as part of our role, will provide the changing facilities, the upkeep of those changing facilities and the surrounding grounds to take the burden off the DCC should they choose to take ownership of the turf itself. Thank you.
Happy to take questions. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kia ora kura. Thanks for coming, gentlemen. Always heartening to have a vote of confidence in council's capacity and project management. Not an accusation, but it is often. So thank you for that. This is a budget meeting and I'm interested in what the budgetary implications are of the requests. So looking at insurance and maintenance and lighting and depreciation, et cetera, these are the things that we're being asked to take on. What is that going to cost?
So I guess in terms of the ongoing arrangement and the finer points to be worked through, but Kings and Otago Hockey have undertaken responsibility for the day-to-day, I guess, looking after it. In terms of the, some of the items that you referred to, resurfacing, lighting, really comes down to how well it wears and how long it lasts. Resurfacing, from a budget point of view, at Otago Hockey, we would look to get 10 years as a minimum out of the surface. They're getting better and lasting longer. And when it comes down to resurfacing, you're talking around about the 350,000 mark over conservatively a 10-year period. I guess to give an indication of some of the ongoing costs, that's probably one of the more significant.
But you haven't costed out what the budget would be required from us to make your requests happen?
No, and we've also indicated that we're happy to work through it and contribute through a rent rather than being the owner. So contributing to the ongoing costs by paying an annual rent and working through the finer points of what that looks like.
Okay. It'd be helpful if we could do that in advance of the deliberations meeting in May. And just, Mr. Booth, just to your point around the changing facilities, is that something that the school will make available over, or outside of school hours, weekends, school holidays, et cetera?
Yes, most certainly. So they'll be available for the duration the turf was open. So if it ran to 10pm at night, the facility would be open for 10pm at night and the weekends. Also taking into consideration, we're a boys' school and female, male changing facilities, we've taken into consideration how they'll be appropriately dealt with. So yes, we factored that in. And obviously a lot of wear and tear in changing rooms, the nature of sharing and changing, et cetera. We factored that into our costs for the school, how we cover that.
So it's just been managed as part of the booking process essentially?
Correct, yes.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. I take the lighting in that has already been consented?
Yes. So the process that we've got to do now, everything in terms of the build has the required consent.
Okay. So just to follow up on councillor Hawkins' question, did you ever cost out any, what cost to light it, to install lights in?
So lights are in terms of, are in the build budget.
Okay, so they're included in the 2.5 million?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. When you look at the turf and the other sports, would it be suitable for things like futsal and things like that?
Absolutely. So our turf's now in the summer are used for football and futsal. And Kings will also be available and suitable for that.
So really, the catchment of Kings, what have you got about, within a very short space, about four or five primary schools and intermediate school?
Undergraded, intermediate, primary, two, plus you'd be four primary.
And so when we then, and I see Mr. Brimble sitting behind you, then we look at the other sports fields around the South Dunedin area that we often hear about lacking maintenance and investment, this is a suitable way to sort of solve some of that problem as well?
Yeah, we certainly see that, yes. This isn't a project simply for hockey or for Kings, it's a community project and for the DCC, if they have ownership, to have access to that turf, to reduce wear and tear on natural turf is part of our thinking, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Elder.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, thank you for coming to present. Something I'm really interested in that I didn't actually know about is the availability of Kings to the whole of South Dunedin, poor sport and seeing yourselves as an asset to the South Dunedin community as a whole, which is exciting. So could you just tell me a bit more about that?
Okay, so due to locality and socioeconomic background of some of our families, walking distance is reality for a lot of our families. And we are within walking distance for a number of our families to attend Kings as a secondary school. Our playing fields are also clearly in the same category and we see the turf being a high-performance surface that can be used 24/7 within reason, obviously, 10pm at night with labouring requirements, as be able to be readily accessed by our community. Our cricket nets, which are also lit and fully covered, are currently being used for extended hours for all those who wish to book it and have access to it. Our tennis courts are not locked during the after-school weekends, they're also used by the community to hone it. Intermediate use those for their junior hockey practices. So that's how our facility is used and we can continue to have our door open for those who wish to use it.
So just another question on that. So there's toilets available to use if you're having a, playing around with your friends and you get caught short, you don't have to go home?
At the moment, no, they're locked for, so indoor behaviour doesn't happen on our campus. But if a facility was being booked, we would make a facility adjacent available. It would come with a key, regarding for our cricket nets, a key, it's a locked facility because it's a very expensive facility and the same with the turf, it would be fenced and those having access would have a key to that and changing room. So it'll be by booking arrangement for those more specific areas.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alfisa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to clear my bias as a Dunedin-born and raised Amorn. And prior to my coming to council, I was a community activist and mainly interested in the progress of, and the support of Maori and Pasifika youth. So as a community activist, I was, have always been appalled at the amount of resources spent on sport as opposed to community and youth development. So my question is, do you have a contingency plan if we, if the council does not choose to support your proposal or submission?
Yes, if the council decided it didn't wish to own the facility, then we would be back to our original proposal, which was an Otago hockey ownership situation. I guess what we're saying today is outlining the reasons why we don't think that's optimal and the pressure that puts on us as a facility owner and manager versus the development of the sport and the programs that we run. So if we were unsuccessful in this submission, we would be back to Plan A, I suppose.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, thank you for your efforts, gentlemen, in making sport available to a large number of people at different times of the year. But I have to declare that I'm a former hockey player who played through the winter on grass and I just want to be persuaded or to understand, if you could help me to understand the benefits of the turf because, as I say, my experience is quite a different one. And I know things have changed a great deal in terms of sport.
Yes, I guess hockey nationally moved pretty much permanently from grass to turf quite some number of years ago. I guess the benefits are around consistency of surface and always being available. The fact that we concentrate ourselves onto a couple of artificial turfs which are lit obviously significantly adds to the times of day that we can play and just a centralized, I guess, aspect to the sport. The change from grass to turf was before my time. There's still plenty of people in the community like you that hold up the good old days on grass. But the reality is, all of the events that hockey participated on these days nationally, tournament-wise, community tend to be on artificial surface and that's the way it's going.
I'm not sure it was that long ago. So they all participate on turf, that's really my question.
Currently, yes, 98%, of our, our programs are on turf.
That's helpful, thank you.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Just quickly following up on a number you threw out there was you talked about the growth of 1700 to 2,700 in the last 10 years. Where is that? Is that in youth and participation and getting kids active?
I think a huge, well, I know a huge percentage of that growth is in juniors, yes. Hockey has recently been through a Small Sticks in Schools program, which has generated a huge amount of interest in that youth area and that is where a large chunk of our growth is. Having said that, it's also now flowing onto secondary school this year. If we look at this year compared to last year as an example, the growth's continuing and this year the biggest percentage would be in the secondary school area. And I think the other thing that is really driving that growth, which I mentioned, is the, is the genuine 50-50 split between male and female participants and being equally attractive to both, which is not something I think too many sports can say.
And do you think this would increase the participation of sports, especially in South Dunedin?
Yeah, absolutely. As David said, accessibility is an issue for some people out there, so to, or for people everywhere. So to have a facility that's much easier to get to in the area, like I said, to stop having our kids having to play at 10 o'clock at night is going to make it a whole lot more accessible to.
And I guess the other key factor with, I don't know, it's not quite because we've already done the pathway of building it, but the case of it is accessed by several, two bus routes at least, isn't it?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your submission. Our next submitter is Sandra Mandic. Welcome, Sandra. Just press the button at the bottom of your microphone.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and speak to you. I would like to comment specifically regarding the support for a free central bus city loop service as well as for the support of the idea of using money from rates and parking or parking charges to make city bus fares cheaper. I put in my submission that I have recently led the report, it's been just released in Wellington by Associate Minister Jenter, on key policy recommendations for active transport in New Zealand. I've brought a brief copies of the report here for all the councillors and I have a couple of copies of the full report which are available online, but you can, I will leave these behind. Part of the report is really advocating for the increasing use of public transport. So these two suggestions made for the inner city are actually really on the right path to move us away from the extremely high focus on motorized transport, especially private vehicle car use in Dunedin and other parts of the country. So I think both of these proposed suggestions are highly relevant and they're really timely given the current government's focus on increasing, basically increasing wellbeing, walking, cycling, public transport and vision zero approach. So I'd like to congratulate even the idea, circulating this idea. And basically, when we look at a public transport, it's really essential to make sure that public transport in Dunedin is available, adequate, accessible, affordable and appropriate. And it actually, that convenient transport option that can compete with a single car use motorized transport, especially for our city centre, it can lead to multiple benefits for our environment, for reducing the traffic congestion as well as for the health of our citizens and residents in Dunedin. So I'd just like to basically express my support for both of these initiatives and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Hawkins.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your submissions. Just a specific question around transport planning. And because it's come up, the proposed, there have been suggestions made that the proposed inner city loop be extended to take in wider inner city suburbs, et cetera. And just wondered if you had a professional view on designing for coverage versus designing for patronage? Because obviously they mean different things to different people and there are pros and cons of doing that. But when you're encouraging us to encourage the, you know, greater uptake in, in public transport locally, which of those do you think would be the most effective way of doing that?
I think starting with a proposal that you proposed at the moment is actually excellent because it is, it is something that we have major issues with the congestion in the city centre and there will be a lot of people that can use it in the city centre. So I think starting with a smaller proposal of having a free central city bus loop is excellent. And then based on the learnings from that and based on people getting used to it and maybe providing more positive feedback, then you can look at expanding that to other areas of the city.
Councillor Elder.
One of the benefits, as I see it, from active transport is actually people getting fit and healthy. And I was just wondering what you would like to say on that?
So that is often the part of the transport that we don't discuss when we make a transport-related decisions, the health and, health benefits of active transport. And when we talk about active transport, it's not just walking and cycling, it's not feasible for everybody just to walk and cycle. So public transport is a part of that story. So in New Zealand, with the latest health, national health surveys, we have basically more than half of New Zealand adults who are not meeting minimum physical activity guidelines. This has significant implications for increased risk of development of non-communicable diseases, including cardiovascular disease, diabetes, cancer. And there is a strong evidence in research that regular physical activity can reduce the risk of premature mortality by 30% as well as reduce the risk of many of those diseases by 20 to 40%. So yes, I think the transport-related decisions, including public transport, should take into account the wellbeing and health of the citizens.
Thank you.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your submission. It would seem that the popularity of electric scooters runs counter to what you're advocating. Is that a fair assumption?
That's a question that we've received recently and I have to say, I was surprised myself to find out a couple of months ago that all of a sudden we have a city full of scooters. And there was a group of students that came from US, literally arrived a week after the Lime scooters were introduced and asked me exactly that question. I said, I have no response to it. I think there is no insufficient research evidence, just because this is the newest model of transport, so we yet to investigate that. We're doing some work and there is initial work done on e-bikes and the benefits of e-bikes. And so for electric bicycles, it's actually proven they can provide a sufficient amount of physical activity, moderate intensity, depending on how users use it. I can't really comment on Lime scooters, but also on the other side, we can think about that there are some alternative modes of transport, they may be having negative effects on physical activity, but they may be having a positive effect on reducing the car use and potentially positive effects from sustainability perspective.
Work in progress, thank you.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thanks very much for your submission. What would your thought be that we may still have some legislative barriers that we face that in fact are outside of our control, especially the public transport operating model? And in fact, that even if we decide to go ahead with the loop bus, we may immediately be forced legally to hand the control over to the, to the ORC or face direct responses from those who hold contracts under the P-TOM model that are running in the same area as that? Do you, because I noticed you said you had talked to Associate Minister of Transport with your project. Do you have a sense of the ability of us to actually execute our will in public transport versus the environment of the government and the rules around exercising public transport?
I have to admit that my background is not in policy. I'm an exercise scientist who led this project as a part of a multi-sector and interdisciplinary research initiative. So I can't comment on that specifically, but we have just. research initiative, so I can't comment on that specifically, but we have just released or had meetings with stakeholders in Wellington besides the launch as well Christchurch and I just came last night from four meetings in Auckland discussing it across different sectors and a lot of people were commenting about their own barriers to make some changes as local councils. So I can't really comment on that, but one part of our report is that if we want to see the change in transport behaviours across New Zealand, we need a strong leadership and we need accountability, we need to set targets and accountability to deliver those targets, but that also requires strong governance, not only locally, but on a central level as well. So that's as best as I can respond.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, thank you for your submission. I was interested to know, we know that a lot of children are dropped off at school by their parents' school gate, which creates a lot of problems, but I was interested to know what you meant by a school travel plan as a response to that for getting children more active.
So this is the part that's been done by some of the schools and I know the Dunedin City Council has been doing some travel planning with some of the schools as well in Dunedin. And it is about considering what are the different travel options to and from school. I'm actually leading a six-year-long research program on a built environment and active transport to school and we have plenty of data, we published fifteen journal articles from Dunedin. So we have a lot of information on it and it's really working with schools, students and parents to actually raise awareness of the consequences of the modes of transport they choose. This is much more complex than mode of transport, we have issues with education policies such as availability to choose any school day that children want. So we have, in Dunedin, we have half of the adolescents enrolling in the school that's not closest to their home, which has implications for transport. But it's really working with schools and parents as well as children, adolescents, to see how can we raise awareness of the consequences of a particular mode of transport and also trying to work together through some barriers and trying to come up with the school travel plans, trying to come up with alternative options. One of the areas we're working right now with secondary schools is research about designing drop-off and pick-up areas that are further away from school that would actually reduce the traffic congestion around the schools at the school times. It would also provide opportunity for young people to have some physical activity on the way to and from school and it would reduce the issue of a traffic safety around school gates at the drop-off and pick-up times.
Does that take into account some of our semi-rural and rural schools in our city area where there are no footpaths and where even walking school buses is not an option?
I'm very happy to report on that because we extended our study to the entire rural Otago last year and we collected data in eleven out of fifteen schools, so we have a comprehensive data for the entire Otago. And what we've seen so far, we're just starting to analyse those data, the barriers are very different in rural areas and with respect to safety of transport to school, which is one of the major barriers, perceived safety, it all relates to traffic safety, it's not necessarily personal safety issues. So yes, we definitely see a very different picture in rural areas and lack of availability of a footpath primarily is a major issue for active transport in those areas.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Our next submitter is Angela Bossard.
Actually, my name's Andrea Bossard. And I am going to stand up, so I'll just move that up. So my name is Andrea Bossard. I push this. My name is Andrea Bossard. I grew up in Dunedin, I spent a couple of my university years here and recently returned after living in Wellington since nineteen eighty-four. I'm a filmmaker and some of you I hope will have seen my twenty-seventeen feature documentary, Kobe. The film is about my father, Joel Kobe Bossard, who lives just out of Middlemarch on the eastern side of the Tyri River. And in the film, he says, "It is every citizen's responsibility to protest when things are not right." And that is why I'm here in front of you all today. I want to talk about DCC responses to climate change in this region. We want our special places and natural resources to be accessible to locals and visitors, but we also want to protect these places from damage and unsustainable use. Careful management is needed to protect Dunedin's natural environment for future generations to use and enjoy. The natural environment supports and sustains us and is essential to our wellbeing. However, the natural resources our environment provides are limited and must be managed sustainably to ensure our future survival. Now, I trust you recognise those words. They come directly from Dunedin City Council policy on climate change. They are brave words, they are words that are very clear and unambiguous. And now I'd like to tell you a story about a small volcano called Foden Mar on the beautifully named Moonlight Road, close to the equally beautifully named small town, Middlemarch. We have much cause to celebrate the small volcano. In amongst its myriad layers of diatomite, are held thousands of beautifully preserved flowers, fossils, leaves, pollen granules, insects and the oldest fossil ever found of a glaxid, which is a whitebait. From these fossils, it's possible to extrapolate the prehistoric biosphere of our part of the world. And this little volcano also offers us, in its hundred-and-eighty metres of layered diatomite, a one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-year record of annual climatic fluctuations at a time when the Earth's climate was warmer than it is today. And only last week, Foden Mar was listed as a site of international importance on the geopreservation inventory of the Geoscience Society of New Zealand. And this is what they had to say about it. "The lake sediments infilling the crater were deposited at a key time in Earth history, spanning a period of major deglaciation on Antarctica. No other site in the southern hemisphere contains such a high-resolution mid-latitude climate record, nor are there other potential sites in New Zealand or elsewhere that might yield such a record. All surely a cause for celebration to have such an important resource on our doorstep at the very time when we urgently need to address what is increasingly being called a climate emergency. Two weeks ago, I sent each of you an extensive research document which Shane Loder and I wrote. So if you read it, you know the story. It's what we call in the screenwriting business, the three act structure. And now, in the middle of the second act, with Foden Mar, our treasure trove of paleo-climate data up for grabs with the entry of our antagonist, a transnational company spinning a veil of smoke and mirrors which wants to mine Foden Mar of all it contains for use as a fertiliser on palm plantations and at best, a stock feed additive for offshore factory farms and feedlots. And that battle takes us on an up-and-down journey as we ask how will this end? Many of us seated today in this room have children. We love our children and yet we are so willing to steal away their chances of a rewarding and fulfilling future and a safe planet. We allow these companies in for the sake of growth, for the sake of GDP, for the sake of our children, saying, 'We know best, we know what's good for you.' But I want to say very loud, very clear and unequivocally, neither you nor I have any mandate to allow the destruction of Foden Mar for short-term gain, twenty-seven years only. We must listen to those who have the most to lose. We have no mandate to destroy a site so rich in data which could help the youth of today and unborn generations make their way in the world which we have sullied and polluted. Knowledge of paleo-climate is absolutely essential to making projections of what our climate will do in the future. A recent and key international paper by paleo-climatologist Dr Richard Levy Etal highlights just how rare paleo-climate data sites are in the southern hemisphere at our latitudes. And from Dr Michael Mann, a climatologist and geophysicist, he says, "The single biggest way to have impact on climate change and other environmental crises is through collective pressure on policymakers to act in our interests, not in special interests." So how does Act Three go of our story? The best stories end with the vanquishing of the antagonist and an outcome beyond where the story began. And I finish here by planting the seeds for a geo-park and a museum like those that exist in Germany, China and Scandinavia. Let us augment rather than destroy the treasures of our region. What about making Middlemarch and the Strath Tyri an international centre of scientific, geological and climate research? By focusing on our geological heritage, such a park could contribute significantly to the sustainable development of the region, combining ecological land use with green tourism and downstream economic development." And it was no other than Superman, Christopher Reeves, who said, "So many of our dreams at first seem impossible, then they seem improbable, and then, when we summon the will, they soon become inevitable." So thank you very much.
Are you happy to take questions?
Yes.
Questions councillors? councillor O'Malley.
In answering this question, I will never be able to sit on any of the resource consents that come forward, just saying that upfront because obviously this has got to be consented in the future and now that I've spoken, I'm basically not able to be involved in it. You're basically making the case that on this particular Foden Mar, that effectively it is a, the value in it as a geo-park way exceeds the value in it as a mine?
Absolutely, absolutely.
If we're nutting it down to a single point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your submission.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Our next submitter is Shane Loder. Welcome, Shane.
Okay, so my name's Shane Loder and I'll confess Andrea and I are a bit of a double act here. So I'm new to Dunedin, I've moved from Wellington over a year ago and I divide my time between Dunedin, where I work as a film editor, and Middlemarch, which I would like to make my permanent home. The Have You Say document states that having your say is easy, but are we being heard? Eleven months ago, two farmers presented to the DCC on the rebuild of the Sutton Bridge. They put up an image of sheep being mustered across the old bridge, it conjured up a sense of a rural heartland that as New Zealanders we are proud of. These two farmers requested that the new bridge have an increased weight limit so that they could not only continue to move stock by foot across the river, but also farm machinery and stock trucks. There was much discussion in committee about heritage tours, the school bus, rural post-delivery, emergency services, cycling and the requirement for the new bridge to serve the needs of the community. No one could disagree with those sentiments. But were these farmers really being listened to? Apparently not. On Easter Saturday, two weeks ago, the OTT published this article and I'm sure you've all read it. Leaked report sheds light on mine project. The report states, "The DCC has provided letters of support to an enterprise that will in effect put heavy mining trucks across that bridge every six minutes, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for over twenty years. It effectively turns the new Sutton Bridge into a private bridge and the adjoining roads into private roads. And this was done behind closed doors, away from public scrutiny, without public mandate and it seems without the knowledge of councillors. Furthermore, it took a leaked document from a foreign investment banking giant for us to find out what was really going on in our backyard. Trust is like oxygen. When it goes missing, suspicion and scepticism fill the vacuum. We are left struggling to make sense of the world, living in an atmosphere of fear and powerlessness. But I hear the argument, they'll have to get through the AMA, RMA process first. Will those RMA hearings be publicly notified? I hope so. But can we now trust that RMA process, given that the DCC has already made its position clear on the mine proposal with letters of support? No RMA hearing will be a level playing field. And to paraphrase Goldman Sachs' opinion of us, we locals are too poor and too ignorant to launch a successful challenge anyway. Remember Pike River Mine? The RMA process was so easily hijacked. Independent consultants were paid to write the reports the company wanted, exaggerating the size and value of the resource while ignoring the very real dangers. And despite evidence to the contrary that was presented at those hearings, the consents were granted with great fanfare. In Otago, Ploughman Global's promise of jobs, growth and investment opportunities are built on one simple piece of propaganda that has gone utterly unchallenged. That black pearl, as Ploughman seductively call their product, is not, is the only known reserve in the world of black diatomite and due to its uniqueness is of immense commercial value. There is no independent verification of this claim and it unravels as soon as you scratch the surface. This from Earth Magazine. Chalky to the touch and often light in colour, diatomite can be white if pure, but more commonly it is buffed to grey in situ or sometimes black. Dr Andrew Gorman of the Otago University Geology Department states, "Black diatomite is simply wet and when dried, it is a poor quality white. On the world market, diatomite is a low-value product already in plentiful supply. The Asian Journal of Materials Science repeatedly makes comments of natural diatomite being an abundant and low-cost material. There are already reserves available to meet the world's needs for hundreds of years." Graham Thompson's family worked Foden Mar Quarry on a small scale for four generations. He testifies to the low quality and low commercial value of the diatomite which was used as a cement additive. Veterinary nutritionist Dr Simon Shane from North Carolina University with fifty years experience in the business has reservations about the integrity of the studies Ploughman Global commissioned, AH Pharma, a contract commercial lab to do. He states, "Why diatomaceous earth taken from the ground in Otago should have growth-promoting properties has yet to be explained." Did the authors of the DCC's letters of support do any investigation into what they were in fact supporting or did they just simply trust the assumptions? I can never say this, extrapolations in the spreadsheets provided by Ploughman Global? In finishing, I'd like to issue both an invitation and a request. Come to Middlemarch Community Hall this Saturday on the eleventh of May at ten AM where there is a community meeting to discuss the ramifications of this mine. It will be chaired by Peter Hayden. Thank you very much.
Questions councillors? councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Loder. I had two questions. One was, was it that you were asking us to ensure that there were independent commissioners on the RMA panel or not?
Well, I'm, I'm, I-
You talked about independent commissioners being a problem.
Well, I think that, I gather that there's already been letters of support go from the council. I don't see that the RMA is a level playing thing. I hope it doesn't get to that because I think if it gets to the RMA, the people would lost.
So is it your hope there would be independent commissioners on that panel?
I'm hoping it doesn't even get to RMA.
Okay, but if there was?
Well, there would have to be now, surely.
So my second question is, have you been utilising the fact you have a community board in your area to make your voice heard?
Yeah, people have talked to the community. I haven't personally, I'm talking to the council, but yeah, yeah. And I'm hoping the community board will come to the meeting on Saturday. I hope they do, I can't guarantee they will. They tend to only meet during work hours, so it's quite hard for workers to get there. Thanks, thanks very much.
Questions? Thank you for your submission. Like to invite Jen Cotum up please, Generation Zero. Not here? In that case, if we don't have another submitter, I will move that we break for twenty minutes, so back here at ten forty. So I'll move that adjournment, seconded councillor Wiley. Seconded councillor Wiley. All in favour? Against? Carried? That we resume the meeting? Seconded councillor Lord. All in favour? Against? Carried. So, I’d like to welcome Finn Campbell to the table, please. Welcome, Finn. If you press the button on there, you’ll be.
Can people hear me clearly? Hello, good morning. I’m Finn Campbell. I’m part of Generation Zero, the non-partisan youth-led climate change organisation that champions towards a carbon-neutral Aotearoa. We represent young New Zealanders and advocating for a just and fair transition to carbon neutrality. We honour the Treaty of Waitangi, and we recognise that independence from fossil fuels can only come from all people living in Aotearoa, from all backgrounds joining together under a collective vision. The points of our submission are, consultation and resourcing really like what is going on with the central city plan, both direction taken and the consultation. We understand that the tertiary precinct is getting its upgrade soon, and we would like to see that level of consultation and engagement replicated. In lines with the levels of consultation, we continue to support DCC having adequate staffing to ensure that the quality and quantity of consultation is maintained. On climate change mitigation, Generation Zero supports the continued work to mitigate Dunedin’s greenhouse gas emissions. We support reducing emissions by 10% by the end of 2020. Generation Zero supports the DCC continuing to invest in the reduction of waste and subsequent emissions. In particular, we encourage further insight into community-based projects which can enact the DCC’s vision for waste management. These include projects like Stitch Kitchen and the Valley Project. Generation Zero supports the electrification of transportation to reduce carbon emissions and improve air quality, which will benefit human health. Generation Zero supports actively working to absorb existing carbon in our atmosphere by planting more trees in the city landscape. We also encourage the DCC to investigate other alternative ways to absorb carbon in order to implement them in the next annual plan. Generation Zero supports policy changes to increase renewable energy, particularly community-based renewable energy programmes. We encourage the DCC to work with Aurora to increase the percentage of renewable electricity available. Generation Zero supports the DCC continuing to move away from fossil fuels and ask the council to oppose any sorts of proposals on oil drilling and mining of any sort. Generation Zero also supports the DCC using alternative construction materials, that are alternative concrete, which produce a high amount of emissions in their ongoing projects. Generation Zero supports the DCC investing and improving the city landscape to accommodate a diverse range of transport options, including but not limited to bikes, scooters, buses, trains, light rail and walking. We support the bus loop, which we hope would be electric and provide free wifi and also be free in itself. We support working with the NZ Transport Authority and ORC to reduce the cost of bus fares, support Queenstown, but we would like to see further structural changes to improve public transport in Dunedin. And we support the DCC lobbying our central government to change the Lands Transport Management Act. For our points on climate change adaptation, we support the creation of a 10-year adaptation plan that’s updated every three years, in line with the budget. We especially support immediately increasing community engagement, as this is the first step towards creating a workable adaptation plan that is feasible and supported by the people most affected by the effects of climate change. The DCC should deploy substantial resources in its next budget to begin the process of public consultation and community outreach, commencing an open and constructive, community-wide conversation that is frank and democratic. It is vital that the DCC commence with this effort simultaneous with the production of new information that educates the community to the threat faced by climate change. We support Dunedin following a similar model for South Dunedin as is being used for Hawke’s Bay. Hawke’s Bay faces similar climate change-induced flooding threats as South Dunedin, in addition to coastal erosion and tsunamis. The Napier City Council, Hastings District Council and Hawke’s Bay Regional Council formed a joint committee that established two collaborative community panels to recommend appropriate response to the current risks. This work has been supported by a technical working group in the development of an intergenerational funding model. Dunedin should apply this collaborative inclusive model centred on outreach and preparation to handle the challenges faced by South Dunedin. We support the consideration of a wide range of ideas for adapting Dunedin’s low-lying and flood-prone areas to the realities of a changing climate. This includes spending significant amounts of money to make current houses in these regions habitable for an extended period of time, or the realities of a managed retreat option, such as moving the affected communities to a new home or dispersing the affected communities across into non-threatening communities in the city. We support the clear articulation of and rationalisations for these options in the DCC’s community engagement for creating an adaptation plan. We furthermore support a number of other strategies that Dunedin should consider employing. These include building up the central city to accommodate lost habitable land in existing population centres, a strategy that would also provide an economic boon for the city centre, transforming South Dunedin into community wetlands, employing short-term adaptation strategies such as better storm drainage and more foliage, and funding community projects such as the Community Safe House Project. We support Dunedin protecting its most vulnerable communities. It is unfortunate truth that the impact of the adaptation strategies will have the harshest effect on those least able to cope with them. We encourage the DCC to pursue strategies to mitigate the cost of adaptation for its poorest residents, including engaging in a dialogue with renters, working closely with insurance companies to mitigate the risks of skyrocketing insurance costs, and starting a community fund to subsidise housing transition costs for residents who are forced out of their homes due to flooding. I’m happy to take any questions at this point.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Kia ora, Finn, and firstly, congratulations, I guess, to Generation Zero at a highly momentous day with the Zero Carbon Bill finally being unveiled. So, well done for that at national level. Just a specific question around bus fares, and I only ask this because I know some significant work has gone into fare structures by the organisation’s Auckland branch. But do you have an idea? I mean, we’ve asked, do people support subsidising buses, but we haven’t got any concrete ideas around to what degree or what would be useful. So, has Generation Zero got an idea of what they think an effective fare structure would be to encourage patronage? Or is that something that you would be interested in working with us on? Or just where do you see that getting to?
Thank you very much for the question. Obviously, what’s going on in Auckland is quite a bit different to what Dunedin needs to work out. In an ideal world, from a climate change perspective, the way that we move around people is going to be... needs to be closely examined, and if the community is able to share the cost of transportation so that the act of catching the bus in the first place is free on a day-to-day basis, I think that would be the most ideal outcome. But obviously, introducing a flat fare structure or reduced fares for those who are less able to pay, students or below a certain age category, would obviously work quite well as well. But it was obviously, you know, the $2 fare in Queenstown, you know, quite improved the situation there. So, it’s like trying to find a balance between what will work for Dunedin and what Dunedin’s willing to pay for, of course, is a certain separate thing. But in an ideal scenario, a flat or zero fare structure would be ideal.
Thank you, Finn. Oh, councillor Elder.
Thank you for your submission, Finn. So, does Generation Zero lobby central government as well?
We do what we can with the Zero Carbon Bill. We try and have those conversations with members of parliament, as well as directly talking to our relevant local MPs.
Yes.
Doing what we can, yeah.
Thank you. Now, my question is, there are two ways of decreasing fares, and one of them is the government subsidises or pays for some of the bus. And whether in fact it would be worth or have Generation Zero engage in lobbying central government for higher subsidy on bus fares?
Just because of, like, how many people we have within the organisation, we do have to take a sort of targeted focus. So, at central government now, because we’re working on an overarching framework for climate change, that’s kind of where all of our focus is going. But ideally, we would always support local government if they wanted to negotiate with central government on these issues. We’d always find our support.
Thank you very much.
councillor O'Malley.
Thank you, Finn, for your submission. Just two points, ones around climate change. Currently, our target is around 2050, the date for carbon neutrality. And I’ve asked this question of other people who’ve come forward. Would you like us to see that move that date closer to the current date so that we have to start actively enacting our policies and activities so that we will have to be ready in a shorter period of time?
Thank you for the question. There are some concerns that by shifting a stricter target closer, that we entrench that target as the set place that we’re aiming for, and it does make us slightly less flexible in some cases if new evidence emerges that we need to go further in one direction or another. So, I think having the 2050 target still works quite well, but obviously, things should not stop at 2050, and things should always be working through in incremental steps. So, always, we’ll always be pushing for the short-term steps to enact that vision rather than just relying on the 2050 vision. So, 2050 is, we think it’s good for now. If it moves forward or moves back based on evidence, that we’ll accept that, but we’ll always prioritise the short-term steps to kind of make sure that things are happening and that they’re quite reasonable and you can see them going on.
Okay, thanks. The public transport operating model. Do you think that without changing that model, we can have much flexibility in how we can operate our public transport system?
This is not quite my area of expertise, so I can’t answer the details of the public transport model. But obviously, if council’s finding it difficult to enact what it needs to do to work for the local population, then obviously, we’re going to support them in ensuring that DCC has the authority to, you know, make changes for the people around it.
Okay. I won’t bother staggering you anymore on that point then. Thanks.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, thank you, Finn. Really, I took the submission. Mine is a question of perception. I’m interested to know, in the networks that you interact in, what is the perception of what council has and hasn’t done? How accurate... you’ll be aware of the journey we’re on and where we’re up in that journey around climate change. How accurate and pictured do you think people that you associate with and talk to have of what council has and has not done in that particular space?
Thanks for the question. I think for people within the community who are actively involved and who have seen the work that DCC is doing or is trying to do, do have a clearer understanding of what is being limited with the options available to council. I think people are kind of aware that council is struggling to find authority and ability to do things based off how much power is given by central government. I think that does shift when you move into people who are... communities who are less involved with council. They... I think there’s a disconnect in that sense, that people kind of associate authority with government and all government, and, you know, they say, “Well, if the government should be doing it, then, you know, why isn’t it getting done?” And so, I think that’s something that I’ve definitely seen, and I think local councils definitely are expected to carry too much of what, you know, they’re actually legally able to do.
Thank you.
councillor Elder. Thank you, Finn. Seems we have run out of questions. Thank you for your submission.
Thank you very much.
Our next submitter is Neil Haraway. Neil, welcome to the table. If you just press the button in the centre at the bottom, get the microphone on, and we’re fine.
Thank you. Kia ora, kia ora. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. Let me say first, I don’t envy any of you your job, being hammered from all sides by people who want something or don’t want something, and nobody wanting to pay for any of it. So, good luck. So, speaking to the Dunedin host submission generally, I support that submission on Dunedin tourism, which is largely reacting to the Martin Jenkins report. I would say that this report, which is very critical of the DCC and enterprise Dunedin, has to be followed up quickly and rigorously. We urgently need the city marketing manager to be appointed, hopefully a Glenn Hazelton type who will work with passion and drive and work with the industry. I think we need a focus on tourism that’s separate from the work, invest, study, live sectors. Part of the city strategy, I know, but I think each of those needs separate attention as well as being bundled together. I think we need real coordinated collaborative action, not the collection of general principles and high-level strategies. That was the Dunedin Draft Destination Plan, which I don’t think really was a plan at all. Tourism is strong now. Have to say, that’s on the back of global growth and cruise ship growth. Coach tours haven’t been anything like as strong, and independent travellers have not been as strong. My business has grown in the last couple of years, but in this last year, there’s been a drop in independent travellers from Australia, from China, from the US and the UK. Only New Zealand and Germany have grown, in my particular and slightly peculiar niche. But I think there are signs that things are slowing down. I think now is the time to agree an approach for the long-term future of tourism in Dunedin, which has assumed greater importance as other sectors have dropped away. I think one specific strategy is to build links with Queenstown and Wanaka to try and encourage winter visitors to spend more time in New Zealand and to visit Dunedin. Okay, so, on the submission I made on my own account, I’d like to talk to a few points. I suggested we double Dunedin by 2050. This sounds huge, but it’s not a huge target. It’s only about 3% growth per year. And I don’t care if it’s population growth or GDP that is measured, it’s still not a huge growth. I note that the DCC Economic Development Strategy Plan for the next 10 years aimed at 2% job growth per year. I noted that the Draft Destination Plan aimed at 10% growth for tourism businesses per year, which I think is unrealistic and unsustainable. My point in suggesting that we double Dunedin is not to literally necessarily double Dunedin, but to encourage a conversation and a real plan for the next 30 years till that point, and even 50 years and 200 years. Karatani Runanga has a 200-year plan, and a generational plan, which I think is admirable. So, I urge that that conversation and Dunedin’s effort be aimed at green growth. We have a wealth of experts and innovators in the city. With collaboration, I think we can make this small city stand out from other cities in New Zealand and overseas in leading green growth. First, don’t grow mosquill. New subdivisions are gobbling up the scarce and precious resource of A-grade farmland, which is only 6% of New Zealand’s land area. Old Dunedin could be densified, which is much more efficient, and the success of the Weyhouse Precinct shows that people will respond to that. Other eco-points I made, the idea of large wind turbines on Portsmouth Drive. There’s a plentiful supply of wind there. It’s in the town. There is an electricity substation ending right there on Portsmouth Drive. It would be a great symbol of our commitment to green growth. And in fact, that’s just an extension of what Dunedin City did many years ago with Waipori Power Station, and in a wider sense, in planting forests those many years ago during the Depression. The likes of Peter Lewis’s enterprise in making house building blocks from soft plastics, not sure where that went, but what an admirable enterprise. Regarding the bus service, I did respond in favour of rates supporting cheaper buses. This could save money in parking buildings, which would be... This could save money in parking buildings, which will be increasingly necessary. The traffic in town has grown already over the last few years. So I favour a small EV bus service free on the main street. And I favour a wider bus loop, major, maybe linked with a park-and-ride scheme. So parking north and south of the foreshore, Cavasham, maybe Kaikarai Valley. And that will also, at the right price, encourage people to use the buses. The last section of my doubling Dunedin is who. And to that, I would add, I suggested a super board with all industry sectors and community sectors. That may not be the way to go. It may be cumbersome. But I do think that separate sector working groups or ginger groups would be really useful in discussing the issues facing us and brainstorming solutions and helping to catalyse projects to advance each of those sectors. I do believe in laissez-faire and that has worked really well in many cases. But I do think that people or businesses alone often don't have the knowledge, the resources or the connections to forge new growth projects. So I think working together is the way to do it. I think this is a really good time to be talking and working together to make all sections of the city hum. I've lived here for over 40 years. I don't think we're very good at doing that across sectors. There've been attempts and I've seen them fall over many times. And I think organisations start out with a hiss and a roar. They grow and then they kind of become inward-looking and sometimes complacent. So we're in a strong growth phase now with housing, construction projects and tourism. We have much to celebrate, but also I believe we need to encourage balance across all sectors of the city, whether it's farming, industry, whatever, and to level out our economy. So as each sector will have its ups and downs. And I believe the DCC and Enterprise Dunedin do play a vital role in growing Dunedin in an economically and ecologically sustainable way. And I ask you all for urgency and collaboration and action to achieve this. Thanks.
Happy for questions?
Sure.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Kiora Neil, thank you for your submissions. We've had a number of submissions, as you'll understand, around the tourism and marketing side of things specifically, two of which we've heard from you now. But you also talked about your support for an inner-city bus service. And I wondered to what degree you think those things are related in that when we talk about marketing, we often talk about advertising and those sorts of things. But to what degree is the livability of the city? And so that's things like public transport and cycling and parks and galleries and nature, et cetera. How important is investing in that stuff, do you think, to achieve the goals that you're after in terms of the city marketing and tourism thing?
I think each sector can support the other. So the drive to encourage people to live here and work here and make this a more livable city in the ways that you suggest will help tourism. But I think the campaigns to get visitors to come here first are separate from campaigns to get people to live here. And I think there's been a bit of confusion over recent years with that live, work, study, play, invest. With those things kind of muddying the campaigns. There have been good campaigns into Australia for, for visitors. And I think that's important to maintain as well as the livability, the buses, the green spaces. The, the, um, bus, sorry, the bike track around the harbour, I think is a good example of a project that benefits residents and visitors.
So can I summarise your response in saying that while they need to be approached strategically differently, they're both important pieces of work to reinforce each other?
Yes, to coordinate.
Thank you.
councillor Vandis.
Thank you very much for your comprehensive submission and also for the idea that we could double Dunedin by 2050. However, that may pan out, GDP whatever. In terms of building, you've highlighted the importance of the high-class soils on the Tyre and that we don't want to be building there. You've suggested that this doubling could be done with densification in Dunedin. What is your view on building platforms in the rural and semi-rural areas close to Dunedin?
Thank you. So densification, I think, is easy to understand. Once you stretch out into the wider areas, you have problems in providing infrastructure. However, coming from Koorao, I've seen the decline in small rural settlements over the decades. I would really like to see Middlemarch, Milton, the existing smaller settlements also increase in size. And I think outsourcing some services, perhaps of the city, perhaps of the regional council, encouraging people to move out there. I hate centralisation. It may make economic sense, but I think across social, environmental measures, that centralisation is not healthy. So I would support encouraging further growth out of the town.
And do you recognise that in terms of infrastructure supply, that modern technology now means that you can have off-grid electricity, very workable septic tank systems, rainwater collection systems, so that none of the traditional infrastructure is actually required for a lot of new builds these days? Agree? Thank you.
councillor Elder.
Thank you Chair and thank you for your submission. In particular, I was looking at livability of Dunedin and developing our livability, which is central city upgrade, et cetera. But the mention of the Harbourside Cycle Way really excites me. So how do you think that might change the perception and the tourism offer that Dunedin has?
I think it's a great tourism activity. It's going to be easy, going to be within, within easy reach. And I think visitors to Dunedin will take it enthusiastically. I've just seen the Alps-to-Ocean cycle trail down the Waitaki Valley grow and many others around the region. So I think that is nationally a great source for growth in the future.
It's very exciting and that leads to my next question actually. Dunedin has an outdoor offering that is amazing. We've got many tracks and trails around Dunedin and it makes us a livable city. And I was just wondering what your thoughts are about how we can develop that or whether you see that as being a great tourism offer, offering, developing our tracks and trails so that more people know about it?
Walking tracks certainly, yes. I talked with Ryan Craig, the last destination manager, about that. But also about inside activities for less clement weather and wintertime. So we need to balance what we're offering.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Haraway. First question which leads on to my second question is, what, did you have a good season? What was particular about the season?
The growth from cruise ships was the best thing about the season. There were challenges with the cruise ships for us particularly. I think double cruise ship days are a big demand. So the more we can do to spread that out, the better.
So we've had a number of submissions, as you appreciate. This is our third day. And yesterday, I don't know if you attended the cruise ship debrief. Were you at that? No? No, so that talked about the numbers of cruise ships increasing. And we've had submitters talking about the growth, not wanting there to be any more growth in tourism. What would you say to those people in the community who feel we've got enough in the way of visitors?
I think it's a really important issue. We do have to be careful not to overload any communities and kill the goose that lays the golden eggs. You know, you don't want to destroy the places that people come to see. So I, I think that is an issue that we really need to talk a lot about. I do favour slower growth and I do like the idea of smaller group travel. We are a small group, 50 people, 45 people on a boat is a small amount of the numbers that will come in on those big ships. So the more small offerings we have, the better without degrading the city, without degrading the quality of life for the people in it, as, as has happened in places overseas.
councillor O'Malley.
I basically got the same question, but only with one variant. And that is, do you think that we are currently well enough because it's a funding meeting? Resource to make sure that the city has, working with tourism providers, is creating a sustainable future for tourism so that, so that we don't actually kill the goose with the golden egg?
I support the Dunedin Host submission for increased funding. How much that is, I couldn't say. It is as much a matter of working together as, as the money that's spent, I think.
councillor Wiley.
Thank you Neil. Just touching on your comments around the Martin Jenkins report and tourism and where we go from here. We used to have an import back in 2012 of 600,000 in kind from tourism operators in supporting Tourism Dunedin back then. That's now 137,000, the figures that Norcan Barker quoted on Monday. Even though you're frustrated with some of the dealings with Tourism Dunedin, we use it with, in supporting adventures and in-kind and trying to promote the city.
We've always stepped up for in-kind support. I believe in coordinated campaigns, marketing and advertising campaigns into Auckland, into Australia. I, I supported those. And in familles coming here, for example, media groups or tourism groups always supported those. So I think the industry, that's the big contribution the industry can make in showing the greater world what we have on offer here.
councillor Elder.
Just one more question. I, I've looked at some of the statistics around visitors to different places and domestic tourism is probably one of the biggest drivers for a lot of tourism. What are your thoughts around that?
Yes, in our, in our business, domestic tourism is about 30% of our business. It's the biggest single sector. Australia was next. It's slipped a bit. But domestic tourism hugely important. I don't mean Dunedin domestic tourism, that's a very small part, but Auckland. So important for us to focus on that. Also, Australia, I think important to focus on that.
Thank you.
Thank you Neil.
Thank you all.
Our next submitter is Paul Phelan. Paul, welcome to the table. If you just press the button.
Well, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak today. And thank Neil for preluding mine because my presentation has obviously, Neil's been very important in the industry and supporting Dunedin Hosts. My name's Paul Phelan and I'm involved with several tourism and visitor organisations. I'm here today representing Dunedin Hosts as chairman. I've been involved in hospitality and tourism for over 40 years. I've worked around the globe, working for internationally recognised businesses at iconic destinations. Admittedly, my, my strengths are operations, but in my last 15, 20 years, I've been involved in senior management and gaining more experience in the tourism industry. Since arriving in New Zealand in 1983, a few years ago now, I've worked extensively through Fiorentina, Milford, Queenstown and the southern districts, some of the hotspots of tourism in New Zealand. Dunedin Hosts is the primary industry body for tourism operators in and around Dunedin. Its current membership includes private individuals, incorporated companies and local institutions that provide services and activities in all areas of tourism such as accommodations, attractions, tours, transport, retail, hospitality, training, consultancy. I've seen a lot of time and energy over the last four years wasted on dissatisfaction of Dunedin's RTO. This is, this is or has had a negative impact on ED staff and the stakeholders in the street. From my observation, the staff on the ground at Enterprise Dunedin are dedicated, hardworking, doing their best considering the circumstances. Dunedin Hosts may not agree totally with the latest review of Enterprise Dunedin by the Martin Jenkins report, but we are here to focus on the future of tourism and advocate and support all parties involved in growing the economy of Dunedin. I support an increase of budget for Enterprise Dunedin to enable it to effectively market tourism in Dunedin and ensuring it can effectively complete and achieve its goals. There have been many examples of conflicting information and/or data. I do not wish to continue that debate today. But I would like to point out in my submission some information provided by Martin Jenkins' report on Enterprise Dunedin. On page 63 of that report, it states, however, visitor expenditure has grown moderately over 2012, 2017 at 5.7% per annum compared to 8.2% per annum nationally. Visitor expenditure growth has been lower than several comparable city areas. This is showing the continuing gap between Dunedin and other RTOs or nationwide. Industry is not willing to accept the gap to continue or widen. Understandably, Dunedin has not had a destination marketing manager for the last 18 months due to the pending ED report and recruitment. That aside, it is believed that ED is under-resourced and under-funded. On page 24 and 25 of the Martin Jenkins' report, it compares Dunedin with other regions, a dollar spent per ratepayer on promoting and marketing, which we fall well behind other regions that rely on tourism sector to contribute to their economy. Martin Jenkins states, however, given the significance of the visitor sector to the city's economy, it is worth noting that this level expenditure is low when compared to other tourism destinations. Budgeting, budget, sorry, budgets are challenging and I do not envy your responsibility to dice up the pie. But I do believe the DCC needs to increase its funding to increase the marketing of Dunedin. There are several proposals published lately on how central and local government could raise extra money or redirect money from visitor spending. One recently, the TIA produced a paper on April 17th that the GST raised from international spend, or raised by international visitor spend to go back into local government. This calculation estimated Dunedin would receive $7.9 million annually. The Martin Jenkins' report has 19 recommendations and suggests that if ED was to succeed, they need to follow through with those action points. The industry is concerned if these recommendations are not clarified, defined, action urgently, ED will fall short. The industry has concerns about the destination plan and marketing strategies to encourage international domestic tourists to visit Dunedin in all seasons, especially the shoulder or winter periods. Not only with the discontinued Cadbury Winter Festival, the industry concerns about the winter months as many businesses are forecasting more than a softening of the market. One of the greatest assets Dunedin has is its many varied sections, which are important to the city's economy and within the tourism industry. There are many channels which can contribute to the There are many channels which can contribute to this visiting visitor economy. At one time, one or more will be performing well and others not so well. Presently, we are having strong growth period from the cruise industry, but the hoteliers and moteliers don't see a cent of this cruise ship passengers' money. Hence the importance of never-ending marketing to all potential visitors. I and Dunedin Hosts will continue to support all those who are willing to work hard and contribute for the betterment of the city to encourage domestic and international tourism to visit and experience Dunedin. But we need funding and the resources and we need to get on with it. Thank you for your time today.
Paul, are you happy to have some questions?
Sure.
councillor Lord.
Yeah, thank you Paul, that was quite interesting. Look, I've just got a question and it relates to earlier in the week, we had Mr Norcan Barker here and he talked about perhaps concern with the new job, the city marketing manager that's being proposed, that maybe that person's title should have more of a tourism aspect to it rather than city marketing, should be more tourism. Now, the next day or later that day, we had Dougal from the chamber and he was supportive of that role. He said he'd helped spec the job description and I just wonder if you've got an opinion about that?
Yeah, I mean, I've been asked to be involved in some of that recruitment process and did have a look at the job description initially, but I guess, to be honest, I was relying on the more experience of the marketing people that were involved in that. I do believe it needs to have more emphasis on tourism, marketing for the tourist visitor and hopefully through the recruitment process that can come up.
Yeah, I would hope so too. The other question is, are you confident with the ask for increased spend for ED? You're happy that if they do follow the Martin Jenkins' report as the nineteen recommendations, that that will be money well spent?
I think one of the, yeah, I think one of the things that any business model would be looking at and asking is that if there was more money available or funds available, that it's accountable and measured. And so I believe some of those recommendations in the report would go a long way of improving and getting good value, but I don't think they're actually specific marketing objectives, but not that specific. So I believe that ED would have to come up with some marketing.
Is there a possibility that if the report recommendations are followed, the same budget would go a lot further and achieve a better outcome without increased funding?
I think yes, I would have to agree with that.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Phelan, for your submission. I've got a couple of questions. The first one is, you mentioned that you were involved in the, looking at the job description for the marketing manager at the outset and you're also on the Visit Dunedin board?
Yep.
So would you see that as being important for seeing those recommendations for the Martin Jenkins' report going forward?
Yeah, so I guess since the ED Martin Jenkins' report has come out, I have been leading other stakeholders in other organisations to continue to have communications with ED and communicate and try and work forward because there's, I guess some people still aren't hundred percent on the report or the results of the report, but I guess my focus is work with what we have and to ensure that we progress. I wouldn't like to see procrastination or energy and time wasted for another four years. So I would be encouraging that. I'm encouraging my colleagues and other organisations to work to get a result.
And my second question is one that I posed to Mr Haraway that you would have heard, was around visitor growth and I think you were at the cruise debrief yesterday and heard about the increases that we were anticipating. What would you say to the people in our community who have submitted to us around their concern about the growth of visitors?
Yeah, so, I mean, I touched on the different sectors within tourism or within the city and obviously eventing with concerts and concert and conferencing. The cruise ship business is trading strong and forecasting to be strong, but you know, domestic market is a bit soft, internationals, FITs, a bit soft and there's other sectors that maybe not doing as well. What helps, I think, organisations or the city is that mixture and that when one's performing better than the other, it's propping up the other side of it. So a couple of things that's important, we have a good mix and the mix works. There is pressure points, I guess, on those cruise ship days, in particular the double cruise ship days and it's probably more around transportation which continues to be a challenge for the council and adds to it. I know from a business perspective, on those busy days, we encourage other things, basically dynamic pricing, encourage FITs to come outside the core cruise ship period to have a better experience and possibly at a reduced rate. So we can still manage capacity on those busy days and it's the shoulder periods, winter periods that we really need to encourage development.
So that's a nice segue into my final question, the seasonality, the smoothing of seasonality. Have you noticed the extension of the shoulder period in the business you work in with other of your members?
I mean, it varies and all it takes is rugby tests, long weekend rugby tests or a concert at the right time of year and that's just a boost in the arm and it works great. But there are some cultures that actually prefer to, you know, India, China, you know, some of those people are actually trying to get away from extreme hot or extreme wet weather and encourage, you know, to come in our spring and autumn as well. So, you know, I see the potential in that market as well.
Sure. And my final question is around living wage because there's been some submissions around living wage. In the hospitality and tourism sector, wages are not high and it's often seasonal work. What progress is the sector having through Dunedin Hosts hat, wearing a Dunedin Host hat in paying the living wage?
Yeah, so on tourism businesses, hospitality businesses, they're definitely feeling the pain with the living wage and how to cope with it and also things like compliance costs. Running a business now, it has a lot of compliance costs. I can use our business as an example or Lomond Castle's business as an example. We have budgeted and made increment greater steps into getting our staff to a living wage before it becomes the minimum wage. So we've already introduced that and encouraged others to do the same, but it continues to add pressure, pressure to the bottom line.
Are you aware of any of your members who pay the living wage?
Not necessarily Dunedin members. There are some companies or tourism operators, bigger companies, that are offering that now.
councillor Elder.
Thank you Chair. I was just wondering a question, how much per day does a cruise ship person spend in Dunedin as compared to someone who stays the night? What's the calculation on that?
I don't have the definitive figures on top of my head. I guess it's who you ask and what, like for an example, as I said before, the cruise ship customer, the hoteliers don't see that, whereas if they stayed overnight, they would clip it and it would become part of the spend of that person. There's been feedback from cruise passengers that they would like more opportunities, they would need these to spend more, but through lack of opportunities, whether it's timing, whether it's opportunities.
Recently, we've had the Wild Dunedin Festival and the autumn season actually is often good weather and I was just wondering what your thought is about developing further our outdoors offering when it comes to, we've got this wonderful cycle way that will give people outdoors, but developing our tracks and trails around Dunedin and my putting them as an outdoor offering?
Most definitely, Dunedin Hosts would support that and we have some members of the board working with encouraging cycling in the region and working on a committee to put something forward to, I believe, to the regional council and would strongly support that. The accessibility of cycling around the harbour and that would be a huge plus for tourism.
It's interesting to note that the West Coast Trail has eighty-two percent New Zealanders who use it, so yeah, it's an interesting thing to note to do with our cycle way.
councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Paul, I concur with your comments around the great work the staff do, the tourism staff do and the ISAC staff do. Do you, do you think they're resourced well enough to do what we and the tourism industry want them to do?
I guess my observation and seeing, I've been in Dunedin for four years, I've seen a lot of movement within that department or organisation. I guess, a little bit unsure when someone leaves, have they been replaced or has it been restructured or what have you? So, and I guess even the feedback from the Martin Jenkins' report of all these recommendations, I continue to, you know, ask the question, can we have some clarification on those? Can we have a timeline with those? But I guess a feedback of resources, enough time to do it or we're getting on it, but
But the staffing we have at the moment are really punching above their weight.
Yeah, yeah. I believe they work hard, they do well with what they have to work with.
Yeah.
I believe they need a few more.
We could better resource it is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. And are we doing enough working with the like Waiteki, Central and South Otago and Southland and putting a better tourism package together?
Yeah, I understand we have a good relationship with them. Potentially, we could probably do it a bit better. And for an example, if we got on top of cycling and encouraging cycling in the area and in that whole region, that would probably be a nice synergy between the regions to work with that. The recent trends that's happening next week, it is disappointing of the lack of Dunedin organisations going this year. In saying that, we hosted it last year and last year was fantastic for the city and promoting that and it's not unusual for, I guess, lack of support, but there are some definitely significant organisations or businesses that are not going this year and again, that's disappointing.
councillor O'Malley.
Just a quick question to follow, more or less actually, the last question you had about regionalisation. The airports themselves are obviously very important for tourist movers but are not themselves RTOs and yet there's been ideas floated that we could relieve Queenstown's activity by Dunedin taking some of Queenstown's activity and create a tourism circuit that goes Dunedin and Vicarago, Queenstown. And it doesn't really matter where you start because you'll do the whole circuit. Do you see a role of the airports in working with the RTOs or establishing their own activities so that they complement the RTOs?
I see the airport should complement the RTOs that they should work in conjunction with and encourage in particular that southern route because also by roads, previously working in Fiorentina, it is quite a common place in particular coach tours and that type of business does that southern route and it falls in nicely with timings of staying overnight in Tiano or staying overnight in Dunedin. So the synergies of that and similar to your airport scenario.
councillor La Fiso.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you, Mr Phelan, for your submission. So I need to declare my bias. I'm always having conversations with councillor Elder and I say very brusquely and rudely, I don't really give a toss about tourism until I know that the needs of our most vulnerable citizens and residents are being taken care of. So I want to follow up on Mr Haraway's point about the, well, Dunedin having a two-hundred year plan, according to the move of Puketuraki and the people at Huiwapu, Manofinua, of having that vision and does such a vision exist in the tourism industry in terms of, you know, like carbon footprints of air travel and climate change and another inevitable global financial crisis?
Most definitely and they, we are very, have a strong relationship with TIA and they are right now, they have a framework planned, I think it's 2025, a couple of years ago, focused around revenue, generating revenue. They have now switched their focus on sustainability and presently, a subcommittee of Dunedin Hosts is working towards that, which is going to be presented at our next meeting. The other thing that I'd like to remind everyone, that hospitality supports a lot of businesses and families. Again, I can give Lomond Castle as an example, we employ over a hundred staff which have families, we employ them, we think we pay them fairly. We, when we're doing well, we're spending money, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last couple of years because we're doing reasonably well on the refurbishment of the castle and that subcontractors are suppliers or food suppliers. So I think we are supporting the economy, very much so.
councillor Elder.
Just one more question, sorry, and Turmari and I's debate. The other point was, are you working with Kaipahu and Loko Runanga and Hapu on tourism and on tourismized beaches and islands? Is there a dialogue there?
A small dialogue. I guess there has been the opportunity after the Martin Jenkins' report came out, when I was organising stakeholders to have a discussion of going forward, there was people from the Maori industry invited to that. Unfortunately, they were unavailable, but there was the opportunity to have their feedback and it was welcomed. And I believe in the latest Visit Dunedin group that has been formed in conjunction with stakeholders in ED, I believe there is a representation on that.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you Paul, thank you for taking time out to come and make your submission. That brings us to Christian O'nhauser. Christian, are you here? If not, we'll move to Rosemary McQueen. Rosemary, would you like to join us? Welcome to the table. And just remember to turn on your microphone, the bottom button.
Is that on? Thank you very much indeed. Oh, where's my page one? I found it fairly hard to find information about what is in the current plan this year and how the money is being allocated. and how the money is being allocated in the documents that I found, in the documentation I found, which has always been very summarised. So some of what I wish to say may be irrelevant to this year's plan, but I hope not too much. I saw the stuff about the bus loop and I absolutely support the bus loop. I would like to see the service include the art gallery, Olverston railway station, Setters Museum and its itinerary. And I support CityRiser's submission to turn the bus route into a residential loop for the inner-city, upper-the-hill suburbs and including the school there, a schools area, so that schoolchildren are encouraged to take the bus instead of being driven to school. I also support using parking fees to subsidise public transport. The parking needs of service vehicles, patrons of retail and hospitality establishments, parts of public and private services and residents of the inner-city and their guests should be prioritised over commuters for inner-city parking. Commuters have other options and these need to be developed so that the efficiency, convenience and cost of using private vehicles is no longer given priority and effectively subsidised by the rest of us, by the community. In tandem with this, bus fees should be nominal, non-existent, though I know it's the Regional Council, not the City Council, that controls that. And schoolchildren travelling to and from school should be free. In fact, I would say that students, everyone under the age of twenty-one should be free, or everyone not working perhaps, something like that. I think the bus fee should be nominal. To this end, I believe parking fees should reflect the opportunity cost of the land and the maintenance costs we devote to bringing commuters into the CBD for them to abandon their vehicles for eight hours a day and more. I gather ninety percent of the traffic on the northbound one-way system doesn't proceed up Pine Hill. This means, and I presume that applies also to southbound traffic, this means that ninety percent of the cost is the one-way system and its feeder routes are put to enabling vehicles to come into the CBD and be abandoned for the day. I think that that cost, those costs, should be factored into parking fees. I believe we should be working towards a situation where parking within pretty well all of the CBD is meted with varying fees applying depending on whereabouts the park is. The area we should be looking at is the area between the town belt and the rail corridor, the gardens and the oval. Within this area, I'd like to see all on-street parking become a mix of meted parking with varying time limits, residential parking that is paid for annually, and free parking for maximum periods of between one and two hours depending on how far they are from the retail sector and the proximity of residential areas. Within this area, for the safety of pedestrians, I don't favour the creation of off-road parking. So that would actually feed into the 2GP where people in the inner-city are required to make onsite parking if they're developing their sections. I don't support that because every driveway in this city and in this country where no one has come across Road Rule, User Rule 4.4, is a danger to a pedestrian. Sorry, I've lost my place. I don't favour the creation of off-road parking unless it's for the purposes of creating park-and-ride facilities on the outskirts of the CBD. Supporting the introduction of this scheme, public transport fees should be notional and non-existent, perhaps two dollars per trip, children free. The aim would be to make public transport more convenient than private vehicle use. The availability of free or low-cost parking within the CBD and the expenditure on upgrading commuter vehicle routes are a public subsidy that is open-ended in its demand. The more you make it a better alternative, the more people will use it and the more money it requires to keep it a better alternative. So the subsidy should be to public transport instead. The bridge, I continue to oppose building a bridge between the gardens and the Steamer Basin, the Chinese Gardens and the Steamer Basin, believing that the bridge, if we are to have one, should run instead between Bridge Street and Robert Streets. The adits are still there and the Warehouse District is increasingly a popular pedestrian-friendly destination. The pedestrian count on Vogel Street on any weekend day is much higher than on the Chinese Gardens. And it's been objected that the, sorry, it's well suited to being the link to the waterfront. It has been objected that the southern ramp of the Highway Bridge lies in the way. But of course, the current proposal for the Van Brandenberg Bridge envisages removing or redirecting the northern ramp so that the Van Brandenberg Bridge can land on Custom House Quay instead of on a traffic island a few metres away from the Lloyon and Mercantile building. So this objection to reopening the Bridge Street Bridge rather loses its compulsion. Building a bridge from Bridge to Robert Street that skirts the southern ramp would be a great deal cheaper than redesigning the northern ramp to allow for the Van Brandenberg Bridge. Such a bridge obviates the need for the RHAs's slowly rising circular ramps, taking pedestrians as well as cyclists to the required height since the adits are already in place. More significantly, putting the bridge where the old one was would have the supreme advantage of not destroying the views of the heritage sites and buildings of the area. Beginning work on the Link to the Steamer Basin should be put off until the hospital is built. This is so roadworks that will require the closure of Wharf Street won't limit the options available to the city to reroute arterial traffic from the one-way system during the building process, where I can only imagine that Wharf Street is going to have to be, come into use. The costs of responsibility for and commitment to reinstating the wharfs should also be clarified before work is begun. If it becomes apparent that the cost of reinstating and maintaining them will be entirely a public expense, then public permission for doing so will need to be sought. Building the bridge should await that permission. The use of roads and footpaths. I oppose the footpaths of the central city being used by riders of powered scooters, whether they are rental or privately owned. For pedestrian safety, the city needs to include powered wheeled recreational devices in its bylaw, prohibiting the use of foot-propelled field recreational devices from being written on the footpaths of the main shopping district. And in order to preserve the footpaths of the inner-city as a place for pedestrians and to control commercial utilisation of them, the city needs to prohibit the trading of rental scooters from those streets that are currently restricted to mobile trade. The city needs to charge Lime or any other purveyor of rental recreational devices for this privilege. There is a suggestion that imposing a speed limit on powered recreational devices will make the footpaths safe. I oppose this. Once one group of recreational devices is allowed on the footpaths, others will follow. Speed limits like careful behaviour are unenforceable and so won't represent a means of making footpaths safe for pedestrians. The council may have gained by now data of how much of its life a rental scooter occupies the footpath available for hire and therefore has an item of trade and how much of its time it's actually in use masquerading as a motor vehicle. Perhaps the figure is fifty-fifty, but looking at the footpaths where serried ranks of them occupy the same place all day and others awkwardly litter the footpaths at night, leads me to estimate that they are like privately owned vehicles and spend perhaps ninety percent of their lives idle. Ninety percent of seven hundred scooters lying idle on the footpath makes for a lot of litter and erodes the visual amenity of the streetscape. The city's duty under the commercial use of footpaths policy is clear. Rental scooters are creating visual clutter and need to be removed from the footpaths of the inner-city. Rental scooters, like rental cars or vehicles, are such entitled to be parked providing they are legally so on the road and in the public sphere. But rental scooters, unlike privately owned ones, are also goods. When they are not under contract to a user, that is when there are items available for hire, they are goods. And as goods under clause eleven point two D of the Road and Bylaw, they are forbidden to be placed on the road without a licence. So anyone who places one on the road, offering it for trade, is in contravention of this clause of the bylaw. The city must ensure that Lime and all other traders offering goods for hire pay for permission to conduct their trade on Dunedin's footpaths. The annual fee suggested by Lime of eighty-five dollars per scooter is a good place to start. ACC and GST should be on top of this. Better than allowing Lime to use our footpaths would be allowing one of the locally-owned companies so that we don't have an overseas company clipping this particular ticket. Now, mobile traders are prohibited from trading from the footpaths of George and Prince's Street between Albany and Jetty Streets and also from the Octagon and some of Maori Place, except in designated sites. There is a reason for this. Not only to ensure the visual amenity of the footpaths is maintained, but also the more important one, to ensure that the footpaths remain a place where pedestrians can gather and move about in safety. Because pedestrians aren't only purposing to get from A to B, they are also gathering on our footpaths and socialising. And it's an important function of footpaths. Within this area, designated parks need to be made available for trading in rental scooters, for the trading of them, to which they should be returned when they're not in use. The cost of setting aside and maintaining these parks needs to be added to the licence fee charged per scooter. Thank you for your time.
Questions councillors? Councillor Vandis.
Thank you, Rosemary. You've suggested that parking should be restricted between the Green Belt essentially and the rail corridor. Where do you suggest that most of the city's commuters would be able to park?
They would be able to use the parks that are available there, but they would have to pay for the privilege.
So are you suggesting that commuters feed meters all day in order to do their jobs in the city?
That you provide the same kind of measures that you do in the central city, that you can feed once in a day or do it remotely by, if possible.
So you want basically to ban commuter free parking between the Green Belt and the rail corridor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Doesn't appear to be any other questions, so thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have any other submitters? Seems we have no more submitters at the moment. I think probably the best thing to do is to adjourn for ten minutes. So councillors, we'll hopefully have a submitter within that period of time. So I'll move that we adjourn the meeting until eleven fifty-five. I will move that we reconvene the meeting, seconded councillor Benson Pope, all in favour? Against? Carried? Welcome. We look forward to your submission. So you just need to, when you're speaking, just turn on your microphone and we're all waiting to hear your submission.
Salofa, my name is Elsie Teimali Utsu-Freeman. I am a second, local second-generation Samoan woman who is currently the president of the Dunedin Basfika Women's Branch here in Dunedin. I was born, am raised and educated in this city, Ute-Potie Dunedin. I am a community leader and I have represented on many Basfika local and national committees. Who do I represent? I have the mandate of a number of Basfika community families and community people and community leaders. I am also an advocate in the social sector platform and a platform for change. Why am I here? To me, it's very simple. I am here about Basfika whano in this community. I am here to ask about allocating more funding to the local NGO sector, communities and base groups for the purpose and the wellbeing of our Basfika families and community. In the New Zealand Basfika Economic Report, on the thirteenth of November, that was launched last year, Basfika people have contributed over three billion hours of volunteer work. We are a nation and we are a community that give a lot of, not financial contribution, but a lot of power, work power, to our community. I am also here to talk about Basfika whano in communities that do the maki and they know the people and they work with the people every day, whether it's in a paid position or in a community position or a volunteer position. Our churches and our community, that is us. This is an important factor because we know our community, we know our people and we know how to make change. We also know this through the work that we do around the support that we have from our local families. So today, I am here to ask about increasing the funding to the social wellbeing strategy of at least five hundred thousand. The purpose for this is because the funding that goes into this city and that goes into NGOs and local groups goes to the core mainstream. What are we asking? What we are asking is that we, some part of that money is actually given to our Basfika families, community services, because that is where we make our change. That is how we contribute to our communities. In my submission on the fifteenth of April, the purpose was to ask for more community funding to go towards the wellbeing of Basfika families and communities. We matter in this community. I see here on page of the Dunedin Social Wellbeing Strategy and I see here healthy and safe people on the strategic direction on number three. You have Basfika people on this photo. It's got to be more than tokenism and it's got to be more than that for our people. We have to count in this community. We may not always be at the forefront of things, but we are always behind helping people or doing our own work, work that no one knows about. I am a qualified social worker. I'm also a qualified, I'm not going to say councillor because I'm not a council person, but a councillor. I went and got many degrees and qualifications so that I could help people when they came. That was the dream of my parents when they came here in the nineteen sixties. That is a dream of many of our parents that came here. The second generation is the implementation of us working that dream. The dream, the first dream of step one is our parents came here to give us a better life. The second step is for the generation of our children, of us, sorry, to do that work. The third generation is our children and our youth to help them to do this. We can't do this every day unless we have support from organisations, from community groups. But we need funding to be able to do that maki in our community. I want to finish off with a proverb. And it sort of summarises everything to what I've come and asked for today. This is my first time here. In fact, this is probably the first time in my family and extended family that we have been allowed to come in here to speak. There's not a lot of political status in my family because to them, they don't see how it can contribute to the grassroots of how we work and how we practise. So on this, I'd like to end off with. The way to authority is through service. The concept of tautua includes notions that in order to lead, we must serve. The DCC Council has an obligation and a responsibility to serve Otago and our Dunedin Basfika communities because we count. Tenakoto, tenakoto, katoa, hafteima, hafteima.
Thank you, Elsie. Are you happy to answer questions?
Okay, yeah.
Very good. Our first questions are from councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Kia ora Elsie, good to see you again, LJ, a beautiful baritone voice. And thank you for acknowledging how difficult... And thank you for acknowledging how difficult it can be to engage with this process for people. We're not particularly, we expect a lot of people to come and engage with us on our own terms rather than on theirs and that's helpful during this process to be reminded of that. So thank you. Because this is a budget meeting, my question is around resourcing. And quite, aside from the quantum of, of money, I'm interested in whether you have any specific suggestions as to where that would be allocated? I mean, you're obviously familiar with the social wellbeing strategy, so are there particular outcomes in there that you think require greater resourcing or is it more a question of trying to address all of them through a, through the lens of a Pacifica community so that your community achieves the outcomes that are set up in the, in the social wellbeing strategy holistically? Does that make sense?
So there's two parts. There's two parts of the resources of being, one is the application of funding to resources. There's, there's two parts to it, that is my belief. Off the top of my head that I can think of right now, there is maybe five qualified Pacifica social workers in this community. And quite often, we are asked to do the work because we have the qualification. However, that work needs to extend out to get more people, not just qualified, but to be able to do the work in the community. There's limited resources and I'll, I'll just share something with you. I am a social worker at Presbyterian Support Services. I have been there for five years. I made a decision to move from the Pacifica NGO because it was about, for me and the community of having a choice of where they want to go. And so it was supporting the organisation to be prepared. I don't think there's enough resources in providing cultural planning for organisations. I don't think there is enough money, funding available for frontline workers. And I also don't think that there's enough resources in the actual doing work. Now, I know that it's difficult of justifying money to go to Kai or transport or things like that, but those sort of, those sort of things are really important to make change because when you are working with families or churches or communities, some of them don't even have connections with those groups. And so an option is that they can come somewhere where they feel safe. And if we can't help them, then we have to make sure we don't hurt them. I've heard that quote before. So that's not mine. So there's a, there's a number of different areas where I believe where the funding should sit. And one of the things that I think that is really important is that funding is put into a particular role of our Pacifica person to be able to do a quantified report on families by Pacifica people who can really speak about how they feel and then get an idea of what we need or what they need to succeed. Because when they don't succeed, we don't succeed and this community doesn't succeed. And so when we're talking about reports and things like that, where is our Pacifica voice in that? Where is our Pacifica voice in our community, in our schools, in the hospital, in all areas? Because you're, I hear, oh, these Pacifica people, all the Tongans, all the Samoans and da 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 da, that isn't going to help. But if we have someone or a group or somewhere safe where they can go, then let's have a service for them, a good robust service that meets the requirements of the Ba'rang i system, but also delivers the practice in a Pacifica platform. I hope that answers your question.
No, that's fine. I've just got one quick follow-up question. My question's quick. And, and it's a perpetual tension really in how we resource what you broadly call community development and the social wellbeing strategy. And that is whether we're better off resourcing, having a greater resource internally, i.e. at council to help deliver this work, or whether we're better off empowering agencies or communities outside of council to lead it within their own communities. And so I'm interested if you have, and if it is the latter, where that would be best allocated to enable the work that you want to see happen, get done?
I'll give you an example of what's happening within our organisation, but I do not represent Presbyterian Support Services Family Works. When I came to Family Works, I was the only Pacifica social worker there. Through the years that things have happened, we've had an increase of 34% in Pacifica clients in our organisation. When I started, there was 1%. And in talking with our organisation, we had to do something. We now have a Pacifica team of six. We run programmes and we have our community that is part of that and we bring them on board. We're also doing educational programme. We were successful in getting the, the Power Up contract. But it's, it was about us stepping out and taking lead with community consultation with our people around what do you need, what can we do, how can we help? And through that, this is the project we've been working on for the last couple of years. So when we're asking about community development and where that should sit, I think that we would have to have a funnaw with our people to get their advice, to get their guidance. Because it's very important that they are included and not excluded and not, their voices aren't brought to the table. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
Salo fa, thank you. $500,000 is, did you, the first question is, do you see that $500,000 for Pacifica or for an increase in the social wellbeing overarching policies?
Firstly, I see it as an increase to the social wellbeing with a consideration of at least 200,000 of that to go towards a Pacifica project or a programme or consultation. The reason why I say that is because I know myself of doing the budgets within our team that it is a lot of money. And it seems like a lot of money, but when we look at the number of, the population of the people that we touch, we've had over 72 families come through to go through our programmes. And so that, aside from that, we're touching many families in the community that aren't involved with NGOs or groups like that. And to me, that is a way of making change, of them having the power to do that, but also to have a say in this. Because I know that we had our Pacifica meeting with the mayor and that was great. You know, I really enjoyed that, that was my first one. And I have to acknowledge is that with having Maria, councillor Maria La Fissal on council, we're getting more information around what's happening for council and our community is getting more involved because we know what's happening and we're getting included. And so this is another step to our voice being heard at the table, which is good. And it's the beginning of things. So as a start, I think my suggestion would be is that first the, the $500,000 to the strategy plan, but allocating some of that could be to a Pacifica project or the wellbeing or targeted specifically for Pacifica.
$500,000 is a huge amount of money and given it's an annual plan rather than a long-term plan and I'm probably talking stuff that you don't want to really understand process-wise. I'm intrigued and it's very generous of you to understand that there's a greater need outside of the Pacifica for some of this work. But if we were, and I'm not sure whether the numbers are going to stack up for deliberations, but if we were to target a conversation or continuing hui that leads us to a much bigger position for the next long-term plan, to consider how best to target social wellbeing money, would that be at least something? Even, and, and what proportion of the population in Dunedin is Pacifica?
What do you mean by that question?
So, well, I'm, I'm just, we, we target a lot of funding for different purposes and I'm just, I, I don't want to do it population-based, but I am, I, you've talked about how you're often there helping at the back, but not necessarily being seen as leaders. And to, in many ways, you're a population that doesn't get the same status as Manu Fenua, understandably, but I, I'm just wondering where you are at because you're the longest, you, you've been around a long time in the Pacifica community.
Yeah.
But how, how, how big are you?
Our population, the, the census hasn't come out yet, but there is talk around, around seven, seven, six to seven thousand of people in this community. Because you're talking about Oma'nu, down to Ba'aku'fu, students. We have a quite a big, a big community, but you don't hear a lot about the small cluster of communities and the increase of families coming in and out.
And yet we use our, we recognise Pacifica greatly, we're going to be our sporting heroes and claim them all and disregard how many other respects, I get that. So your focus is mainly Pacifica and you would, at the very least, a continuing dialogue funded and resourced to ensure that we get the best outcomes for a much bigger piece potentially under the long-term plan?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Councillor Elder?
Thank you, Chair, and welcome to the table to speak, we did really well. I was just listening to your song and, and songs about aapi, which is that kind of support. And last year, we had this amazing hui down at Burns Hall, which, tell us about that and how, how, how that worked?
About the funnaw at Burns Hall?
Yes.
So from what I understand, that was a funnaw for Pacifica, for the mayor and coming to support the Pacifica strategy and him and his team asking about what do we want? Can I speak freely? Is that okay? In order for funnaws to happen, there is a process. It is longer than a couple of hours. You need to, at least a day for our people to process and to understand and to comment back. And so not a lot of us go to the DCC website and have a look at full submissions or things like that. I was told to put the submission in by my community and by Pacifica women's as the forefront of president of the group. And it's usually the youngest that will be given that job to go and speak on behalf of, of our group and of many of the, our community people. If you want the true essence of how, or some input into our community, then give us the manner of being able to do that, longer than a few hours. That is all we're asking. We're asking for at least a day to be able to sit down, to process, to really take on board on how we can contribute, what we find not so good and what we find really good and what we can build on. Because it's, it's not about a deficit, it's about our wellbeing and it's about our children coming forward, that we create a safer place. That's my dream for my kids, that's why I do what I do. I don't want my kids to be another Samoan statistics, you know, and poverty and, and crime or things like that. I don't want that for my kids. And neither did any of our first generation or our parents that came here. This wasn't the intent. It was for a better life. And so when we're talking about the Pacifica strategy, I think that to contribute to community development as well, is that let's have a really good funnaw and let us do it in our Pacifica way. Because even though there are different ethnic groups, we are all respectful to one another when we come together with the purpose of designing and coming together for the wellbeing of our children and our kids.
So following up from that, that funnaw was We Start by the Sound Islands, a we one. Would you like to see, say, one funnaw a year, a whole day one, supported?
Yes, I think that would be good. Thank you. And to coordinate it well and to, to put out what it is about because this document is really lovely and, and this one as well, you know. But we have to explain to our second language people for, sorry, let me change that again, for our parents and our community members who English is their second language, we need to explain to them what this is really. Because some of the terminology and the language in here is quite difficult to understand. And so for us to make a real footprint and for understanding for them, we need to explain it to them and give them time to process it. But it's a good document. Thanks. Thank you, Elsie.
Thank you, Elsie. Thank you for your submission.
Thank you.
And I'm sure it'll get a bit of debate as we go into our deliberations.
Thank you. Fafsa'ava, have a great day, many blessings.
Is Nicola Levens here? No? Okay. Philippa?
We have, I have my chair in the back of the, we just want my chair.
Yes? Floor's all yours.
How do you get it to work? This one? Oh, good. Good afternoon, councillors, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present the annual plan this afternoon. I'm Philippa Harris, general manager of the orchestra, and I'd just like to introduce our recently appointed chair, Megan Bartlett, and she'll be co-presenting with me this afternoon. We're so grateful for the city council's support of the orchestra over its 53-year existence. The city council has been a key partner of the orchestra and we are also, we'd like to congratulate the council on its adoption of its Aretoi Arts and Culture Strategy. The commitment to the arts has been longstanding for Dunedin and of course, it's one of the features that makes it a standout city in New Zealand too. The city council's funding allows us to present a whole range of activities, from our top-flight concerts in the town hall, featuring international soloists and conductors. The orchestra manages to attract some of the very top artists in the world and I think that says a lot for the commitment of the city to the arts, but also the standard of the orchestra is very, very good. But we don't just do town hall concerts, we do a range of concerts. Just earlier this year, we did Tali Ho, celebrating Dunedin sound. And earlier last year, we did Songs of Mwana, an entirely new audiences for the orchestra from those projects alone. We present a wide range of educational projects, from the little ones right through to the university. And of course, we have a really close collaboration with the University of Otago. We do many projects with them and a lot of their students and lecturers are involved with us. And of course, we also present orchestral accompaniment for Royal New Zealand Ballet, for City Choir Dunedin, Opera Otago. These are all art forms which Dunedin citizens have access to through the fact, because of the fact that there is a live orchestra. of the fact that there is a live orchestra. The DSO has identified sustainability as a key focus. We are tackling this in a number of ways, I'm just going to speak to four of those. The one is broadening its audiences and talked about Songs of Moana and Taliho. Earlier this year, we presented a concert of Chinese music. Later, we've got a concert part of Mata Riki, and we also had some Samoan soloists. So we are attempting to diversify what we do and how we do it. We are strengthening our revenue streams, we have appointed a development manager just last year, focusing on sponsorships and donations, and there's been quite a bit of success with that. We have a foundation and we are increasing our fundraising initiatives for the foundation. And Hanover Hall, of course, continues to grow as a cultural hub for the city. City council's funding has also been absolutely fundamental in us retaining our Creative New Zealand funding. Creative New Zealand expects a city orchestra, or we're one of four cities, only four city orchestras to receive council's Creative New Zealand funding, but it expects the city orchestra to receive a substantial component of its funding from its city council. In summary, we contribute in many ways to Aratai. We showcase Dunedin's talent, we employ a lot of artists and musicians, we attract Dunedin, people back to Dunedin, a third of the orchestra has moved back to Dunedin. We are widening our access and inclusion for the orchestra. We have, we're continuing to develop our technology connections with our audience, and we have a key relationship with the University of Otago. In recent years, the DSO has experienced significant price increases to the stage where it is not able to balance it by increased income. We're submitting to the council on two matters. The one is to, for consideration for the council to increase the community access subsidy to DVML. We understand this has not seen an increase since its inception seven or eight years ago. An increase of, say, $150,000 to that subsidy, we suggest that it's provided and allocated to the town hall portion to facilitate the use of this significant local venue, because it is one of the best concert halls in the world for community users, and I do speak on behalf of some of the other community users of the town hall in this regard. We also propose that council consider a one-off adjustment to the DSO. We note that the charcoal blue study into the performing arts in Dunedin is happening at the moment, and also that will no doubt feed into the long-term plan and also the funding for the orchestra. And so we request a one-off grant of $150,000. I'd just like to hand over to Megan Bartlett. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the, as Philippa's outlined, for us, it's not a case where we have a need for our sustainability moving forward to increase our concert activity and diversify our audience. That's one of the elements that we've focused upon. We are restrained in doing this by simply increasing our ticket prices. We have a, we need to compare with the New Zealand Symphony Orchestra in terms of their pricing, this is what our community is telling us. Our existing audiences are resistant to increase and the more diverse community that we're looking to connect with also have got a price point sensitivity. We are careful and responsible managers of our funds. We have in the past pared back our concert activity to what we would consider to be a minimum for performance development of the orchestra and its musicians. However, we are in the position now with additional funding and why we are coming here is that we have got an opportunity and we have got an exciting concert plan for 2020 which will benefit and in some cases will be able to go ahead only with funding. We've got, we're picking up on what has been successful for the orchestra. We have, looking at a Halloween concert, which is carrying on from the success of the Moana concert which filled the town hall, looking at a family focus. We've got collaboration in mind with the three other city orchestras, the Beethoven Bash, which is looking at being a multimedia event with simultaneously broadcasted, conducted by video link, so really something quite different and innovative and exciting for us to, which we hope to participate in. We would love to see the return of the Schools concert. This will draw a younger audience. It's not been run for a number of years and that has been because of financial constraint. That adds to the cultural development and growing of the arts community. In previous times, we had filled the town hall twice with a concert of this kind. We've got on the, on the agenda, again, funding related, a exciting collaboration with the Otago University for a composer's workshop where we can again target students developing composers, and they're going to have the opportunity to be workshop with a professional symphony We submit, the funding is going to be an investment in the sustainability of a proven arts organisation. We recognise that we can't rest on our 50-plus year history and significant reputation of the orchestra. And the additional funding is going to be an opportunity for us to move forward in terms of activity, diversifying our audience, and that's also going to allow us to leverage in terms of the opportunities that we have to promote ourselves to sponsors and donors as well, because that's a key focus that we have and we have seen some very real success in the last year with the introduction of our development manager. We have here a document which we can, we're able to pass that around, which has just got some of the statistics that we have in terms of the hire charges, our results and in terms of our grants.
You're happy to take questions?
Thank you.
councillor Gary?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I'm really struck by the international reputation of the conductors and also the soloists that you managed to attract. And I just wanted to explore that with you around the challenges with that, because certainly the audience, you've been drawing very large audiences for many of your concerts, and they're quite diverse audiences too, depending on the soloist and conductors. What are the challenges for you? Because you're linking with other orchestras, aren't you, around the programmes and these international soloists and conductors? What are the challenges for you in booking those ahead in terms of venues and lining all of that up?
You're right that usually international conductors and soloists are in collaboration with Australian and New Zealand orchestras. And the way it works is that we share airfares and then share the artists, and often these artists don't come to this part of the world if they don't have more than one gig. It's a long way to come for one concert and turn around and go back again. The Australian and New Zealand orchestras usually finalise their planning, in the next couple of months, we'll be finalising next year's plans for the artists that we're, you know, that are jointly presented in this part of the world. One of the challenges, of course, is the financial side of it, we're at the bottom of New Zealand, so there are extra costs associated with the airfares bringing them here. One of the other challenges is getting confirmations of the venues, because the way it works, that if you apply for the community access subsidy, they do those in six monthly blocks. So for example, say, just for example, say, I'm looking at an artist for October next year, I would be applying for the community access, and obviously we'd be putting that on sale maybe the end of this year, the start of next, but the community access subsidy application for that will only be in about, say, March, February, March next year, and you can't get, we can't get a contract until that process is finished. So I would probably expect to be getting contracts for the town hall from the October concert in May next year, but it would have really been on sale November of the previous year. There are issues related to the cancellation policy of DVML. It's not really a practical option for us because DVML says, I've just explained why we can't get a contract, so up until then, the date is pencilled. And DVML, DVML's cancellation policy is that it can cancel it, it holds it for three months and then it can cancel it without further notice. So it's a bit tricky.
councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Two quick questions. One around the submission on the town hall, like ring fencing funding for the town hall part of the community subsidy. Am I right in assuming the intention of that is, would be to cover the Dunedin Centre in its entirety, i.e. the Glenroy Auditorium? No, just for the town hall room?
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, no, it's for the different, you can get a community access subsidy for the Glenroy as well.
And you'd be comfortable with that being included as part of that?
Yes.
Right, okay, thank you. And secondly, my understanding is that the DSO is funded through civic grants?
Yes.
Which is a separate funding process, which a decision council made some years ago. So your submission isn't that the civic grants budget be increased, but that a grant be given to the DSO? Or to ask that question slightly differently? Would it be partial relief to your submission for the grants, civic grants pool to be increased and run through that process where all groups in the city apply for a pool of funding?
More funding for the arts would be super, and if that's the way to do it, I mean, that is the process that the city council has, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I think local organisations do struggle for arts funding, sure. And so, yes, increase, an increase to that pool of funding would certainly go a long way in terms of the artist, you know, the artistic vitality of the city, yeah.
councillor Wilson?
Well, just on that point, I think I, is part of your submission that where you've got service grants, that they should actually be going up by a factor of index over time anyway? Because if we start off at $10,000, we continue at $10,000, as hypothetical for, that always puts you in below inflation.
Yes, it's quite correct. I mean, the effect of no increase, effectively no increase in our grant is not only no increase, but we've fallen behind even further because of inflation, so inflation adjustments, that's what you're suggesting, yes, that would be an enormous help. Thank you.
councillor O'Malley?
Thank you very much for your submission. I had someone comment to me once, they couldn't live in a city without a symphony orchestra. And I think that's actually something that's relevant to why the council does and should support the symphony orchestra. I'm just getting my head around the $150,000 accessibility subsidy and the numbers you've got on this piece of paper here. Are these costs after the subsidy's been applied?
Yes.
Right, so basically the failure to adjust it over time is one of the reasons that these costs are going up?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then the $100,000 one-off adjustment, does that have some relationship to the burden that went towards refitting Hanover Hall and that, like, is the orchestra under some burden that it's wanting to come back out of?
Not really, actually. The Hanover Hall fit out was, we achieved $350,000 towards that fit out, and that's pretty much what it cost. I think that it would, increased support would help us to be able to host even more cultural groups in our venue, yeah.
So this is more for an expansion of activities request rather than a mitigation of burden?
I think part of it's related to the city, the city service grant, really, more than the Hanover Hall, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it does also, we have a reserve which we have, you can see from the figures, that we are increasingly having to access.
Yeah.
That, it really is, again, that sustainability focus that we can't, the cost of a concert each year is not met by the income, so we are increasingly having to, yeah, our reserves are.
And you want to act ahead of crisis?
So it is really looking at that sustainability moving forward, that we have to be generating more income, we're looking actively at that, but it's certainly, it's certainly a key focus for us.
Cool, thank you.
Looks like there's no more questions, so thank you for your submission. Councillors, that brings us to the lunch break. We will be back here at 1.30, so I'll move that the meeting be adjourned until 1.30. Seconded, councillor Wiley, all in favour?
Aye.
Against, Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.